Rich, I think we're ready to get started.
Madam Chair, it goes live at exactly one o'clock.
Okay, perfect. So we are ready to begin. Okay, welcome to our August 18th, 2020 work session. It will now be called to order. We will begin with a roll call. Ms. Cohen.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Ms. Carbit Sanders.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Darren Akofats.
I'm here. Hello.
Mr. Fresh.
Hello.
Ms. Keys Damaro.
Hello, everybody.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Hi, everyone.
Ms. Marin.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Omage.
Hey there.
Ms. Pakarski.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Ms. Thais Mohizer.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here. Thank you.
And Mr. Anavudo. Nathan, are you with us yet? Okay, so we have Nathan outstanding, but we will go ahead and get started. We have a fairly full agenda for this afternoon through this evening. We will be starting with the technology updates and working our way through the agenda that is posted and shared with you all yesterday. All of our actions today are informational, so there are no decisions to be made during today's work session. I am going to, at this time, turn it over to Dr. Braebrand, who will be introducing some of our guests, I see Mr. Veroni already, for the first section. We are really hoping to stay very tight to the schedule, folks. So I am going to need your support in helping make that happen. Your commentary will be timed to three minutes. I ask that you please not talk through the timer, rather allow us to play to on a go back. Go backs will be limited depending on time, but right now we're planning for them to be 90 seconds. I think all of that was said in yesterday's communication, so I won't belabor the point and take up any more of our really precious time. The chat will not be open except for the link that is provided for school board members to add next steps. That is going to be the only thing we do with it for this session. So without any further ado, Dr. Braebrand, would you mind coming on and setting up the first section?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Anderson and members of the Fairfax County School Board. I hope everyone is well today. We are so excited to bring to you our updates on returning to school. This is a reopening of schools' work session for August 18th. I want you to know on behalf of the leadership team and principals, directors, central office and school-based staff, they have been literally working around the clock to prepare for our primary objective just a few weeks before school starts, which is a strong virtual opening for Fairfax County Public Schools. First today, we will be sharing with you the tremendous work from the Superintendent's Technology Advisory Council. And we have one of the co-chairs and CEO of Attain, Mr. Greg Baroni with us. Mr. Smith will be giving him a full introduction in just a minute. And we'll be sharing with you the recommendations from the council and our work to implement them as the school year begins, as we prepare for that strong virtual reopening of schools. Secondly, you'll be hearing from members of our team around special education. This is an important topic in our community and for our students, staff and families. And we will be doing everything we can to share with you the latest updates to serve our students with special needs. And then finally, I will be preparing and sharing with you our preliminary work around our metrics for return to school and a phase-in plan for students this fall. Speaking of technology, and before I turn it over to our Chief Operations Officer Marty Smith, I do want to share with you an important announcement for this community and for this board. I do plan to recommend to this board at our work session later this month around the budget, my recommendation to eliminate for this year the FCPS on fee for our high school and middle school students and families. I am doing this in collaboration with the county executive and really appreciate the close collaboration of the county to make this happen. I've secured a commitment that we will work together to eliminate the fee for this school year, and I will have detailed information about that at our next work session, which will have a budget update on August 27th. So without further ado, I'd love to introduce to you our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Marty Smith, who will do introductions and take you through our technology updates. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Braebrand. Good afternoon, Chair Anderson. Good afternoon to the board. We're excited this afternoon to have Mr. Greg Baroni with us. He was one of the four co-chairs of our Technology Advisory Council. Mr. Baroni is the chairman and CEO of Attain LLC, which is located right here in Tyson's Corner. They're a leading digital solutions strategy and management consulting firm in the area. They employ over 700 individuals here in the county. Again, he's with us this afternoon to provide a brief introduction of the Technology Advisory Council and answer any questions that you might have about its work. Once he is finished with his overview, we'll be going through the 17 recommendations that were most critical and the highest priority. And then after that, you will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and Mr. Baroni. And for timing purposes, he is with us until around 3:30 today. And so with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Baroni.
Well, thank you, Marty. And welcome. And it's just a pleasure to be here to report on behalf of the Technology Advisory Council that was established here. I don't know whether they have a chance to see the slides here, but if you... Are we able to project any slides here?
Yes, we have four documents. If one of you wants to direct me and tell me which one to pull up, I can do that.
Marty, do you have the slides that I last sent?
Yes, you can go ahead and pull up the presentation for the Technology Advisor Council. It's actually the full presentation for today, and we'll begin with Slide 1.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, if you go to the next slide here.
These are the recommendations. I'll be going through these. It's the other slide presentation, Ms. Mueller.
I'll wait for them to show up here.
I'm sorry. Marty, are you referring to the 87-page presentation?
That would be the presentation that we posted for today. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry. There are four presentations posted for today, so.
I mean, the reopening of schools' work session.
Thank you. That's the one that's showing right now.
No, the PowerPoint.
That's not it. It's the PowerPoint. I was gonna say, that's the report.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, and I'll talk a little bit about the council. So as Marty said, there we go. We'll start here. We stood up this council at the request of Dr. Braebrand here in early April here. And it was, as you can see here, we were established as an advisory body to him with a mission centered on delivering the capabilities of the region, and frankly, even the nation, required to keep Fairfax County Public School Systems, system at the forefront of innovation, including connectivity, which is obviously one of the reasons that, that, you know, that served as a catalyst for the creation of the council, access and security in today's increasingly interconnected landscape here. The council, I think initially, Dr. Braebrand contacted Bobby Kilburg, who, for those of you who don't know her, she is the president and CEO Emeritus now and Strategic Advisor to the Northern Virginia Tech Council, and has been in that role for the past 22 years. And in fact, we say that she led this area into becoming known as one of the tech hubs, one of the most influential tech hubs here in the United States over the past 20 years. And reaching out to her, three other people, I got tapped by Bobby. She is, she's been an amazing leader. I am currently the chair of MBTC. And as Marty mentioned, I'm also the founder and CEO of Attain. Amy Gililand, the president of General Dynamics IT here, a several thousand-person organization, and in fact, one of the top five government contractors in the area known for technology expertise. And then Andrew Ko, who's the founder of Connect, yeah, Covecza, and formerly was the global leader of Amazon Web Services in that, as the head of their education practice. So the four of us initially were on this, on this council. And it became clear to us, our strategy when initially contacted by Dr. Braebrand was to do two main things. And that was, one, triage the patient, who was obviously on the operating table at that point. And in the context of technology and the virtual opening of, of, of learning back in the spring. And then moving from triage, we then wanted to move into developing a roadmap that would enable the FY21 school year to, to at least be capable of effectively being a solid learning platform for, for students and parents. In support of the mission, we then broke out and we saw the opportunity for a holistic, a holistic way to address the, the situation that was facing the county and its school system at the time. And we developed eight different work streams and then consolidated into seven. The amazing thing about this region were, we actually had well over 150 interested parties willing to contribute their time and energies on a volunteer basis during this process. And you can see on this slide here, these, we ended up consolidated into seven committees. And, and as, as the slide points out, these work streams, if you will, ended up meeting for over 200 times during the process of, of literally over, only over a short period of 200, I mean, of only two months. And you can see the different leaders that we had here. Communications and Change Management was Alyssa White. She's the founder and CEO of the Merit Group, a PR and marketing firm. Communications and Change Management was her, her leadership role. Technology Infrastructure and Operations was led by James Hannah, which is one of the senior executives at General Dynamics IT and reports indirectly to, to Amy Gililand. Technology Accessibility was led by Pam Baker from George Mason, and that's her specialty. And this was really meant to address the incredibly diverse needs of the special access requirements needed by this, this community. Innovations and Partnerships was actually the two committees that we combined, and that was led by Katrina Stevens from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative and Elizabeth Murphy from the FCPS Foundation. Instructional Technology, I actually handpicked Katie Blot, Strategy Ed. Actually, Katie was the former CIO for the Department of Education and, and one of my former employees at KPMG, a great leader, and has devoted her life to education. Device Access and Connectivity was led by Jeff Mao, who's kind of like a, one of the well-known people in the Ed marketplace. And he's currently at EdMoxie. And finally, Professional Development and Human Capital, led by Richard Kulata, who's currently the president and CEO of ISTE. These are great leaders that we had the benefit of contributing their time. And if you go to the next slide, you can see the different work streams and all of the different members. We actually had, as, as I pointed out, seven work streams, 32. So we had to call out from that over 150 volunteers. We picked 32 members that represented the diverse backgrounds and requirements and also had the availability to contribute. So these are from the nation's and region's most prominent leaders across technology, education and business. And we were augmented by FCPS school board officials and administrators as well as teachers and students. In fact, we actually have one student who was very informative along the way in terms of giving us guides. And maybe we needed more. I don't know. I'm just sharing with you. We had well over 50 participants when you combine the external volunteers with those that were offered up by FCPS. If you go to the next slide real quickly, you can see in looking at this slide here that, and really, I always say, this is by the numbers. Over 200 working sessions, we developed 67 recommendations coming out of those seven work stream or committees. And they were presented in, in sessions over the course of late May and early June. We then identified and prioritized 17 that we indicated were of the highest priorities. And then we categorized them over six initiatives, kind of starting at the beginning with laying the foundation around planning and establishing the foundation for success. And then moving on to people, obviously, leadership gets things done and technical resources. Then the infrastructure and processes behind the scenes. We wanted to make sure there was alignment to support educational success. And then the last three initiatives around resource support and professional development for educators, specialized needs and resource support for the FCPS community, and finally, laying the foundation for the future. We were, with the submission, I'll just say this, with the submission, we then took all of this information and developed what we had then submitted on July 24th to Dr. Braebrand as our final report, which was a collection of these, these 67 recommendations across these six initiative areas. And we did indicate which ones of these were of the most important priority in readying the institution or the organization for the fall. So the 67 recommendations, just real quickly, we categorized them as follows into what we call near-term, midterm and long-term in terms of needing to be addressed by the FCT, FCPS team. Near-term meaning to be done to the maximum extent possible at the beginning of the FY21 school year. The midterm being done over the course of the entire year. And then finally, the longer term ones, they could be done over a one-to-two-year period. And that's how we ended up saying, of all of those, 17, you really got to get done as much as possible prior to the beginning. And with that, we, we submitted our report, our efforts as a council. And again, I think I started off by noting that we were in an ad hoc committee. We have recommended to Dr. Braebrand that he stand up a standing committee that will then take these recommendations and serve as a sounding board and an oversight organization to ensure that they're actually completed. And with that, I'll turn it back to you for any questions and you may have along the way.
Mr. Smith, did you want to go ahead and share? And then we'll take time for questions after you've shared your recommendations and responses to Mr. Baroni's and the council's recommendations.
Yes, I'm going to go through the recommendations in the interest of time rather quickly. We know that we provided them to the board earlier. But as you can see, of the 17 priority recommendations, we've completed nine. Eight are in progress. And as I shared, if we can just go to the priority document now, I'll go through our recommendations quickly. It's important to note that there were three that were focused primarily on our return to school effort. And Kathleen Waltz, who is our Executive Director for the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, will be sharing the progress on those three that were most pressing. So if we can go to the other document, which is the priority document, I'll go through our work to respond to the work of the Technology Advisory Council. But while we're waiting for that to come up, the first was under the initiative one of planning. The recommendation was to create a workflow and a diagram showing how we integrate technology initiatives into our overall FCPS communications. That is complete. We have embedded our CCR representatives into our technology work streams. And so the work that we do within that group is reported out on and shared across multiple platforms in FCPS and is embedded across all of those technology. Here we go. And is embedded across all of those technology platforms. The second was around a recommendation for creating that vision for the role of technology. And it was to establish a clear vision for the role of technology in supporting the learning goals of the district. It's currently in progress. We know that we do have a technology vision for Fairfax County Public Schools. But we thought that with the changing landscape of technology that we've experienced this spring and are going to this fall, it's a great opportunity for us to take another look at that vision. As part of our vision, it's important for us to note that our current vision embraces those equitable access to meaningful learning experiences for all of our students. And now more than ever, the fact that the vision creates a shared responsibility between our school and home that thoughtfully supports students and families as they incorporate these new learning strategies is very important to us. And as we're in the process of bringing on a new CIO, we feel that we'll be able to take the recommendations from the Technology Advisory Council and expertise of a new individual leading the department to create an even more robust vision for Fairfax County Schools' IT technology. Our next recommendation was, again, around communications. And it was scheduling those introductory meetings with each of the work streams to review their recommendations. It's currently in progress. This is really less about focusing on technology, but more about our overall communications. And so our communications office is working individually with our, each of our tech stream, or I'm sorry, with each of our work streams to get a better sense of what we're working on and our, again, embedding those communications into our overall communication strategy for this, for the school system. The next recommendation is around an announcement calendar that is complete. Creating that announcement calendar that includes our technology initiatives and our overall FCPS announcement schedule. That's located on our return to school's webpage. And it is indeed a countdown of all the activities that we've been a part of as we are preparing for return to school on September 8th. The next recommendation, which is complete, was to also create a grid for all of our audiences and communication methods for each. We worked very diligently to create that internal communications grid of our key stakeholders and to identify those platforms that would be most useful for us as we shared that information with the community. We're also working with another consultant, yes, and, who is providing technical assistance for us on all of our communications. And so we feel very good about our communications today and feel even better about our communications moving forward. The next recommendation is around the comprehensive rollout plan for School G. If you remember, School G is the learning management system that will be our new learning management system. It's our new way of learning in Fairfax County Public Schools. We, prior to this recommendation, we had developed a comprehensive plan for rolling out School G as the new way of learning in Fairfax County Schools. We've identified 17 schools within the system that are going to be piloting School G this year. They will not be using Blackboard 24/7 as their learning management system. We're in the midst of that, of that pilot. We have weekly meetings with our pilot teams. We're doing professional development for teachers as we speak. And as we're developing materials for return to school for our families around that virtual return to school, we're also developing materials for families as it relates to School G. I know that there have been some questions about our rollout and the possibility of rolling out School G to other schools during the course of this year. We've had several discussions about that as a team and recognize that that type of change midstream might be difficult for some of our families and staff. So we're, we're going to be looking at this initial rollout of 17 schools and use the information that we learned here to guide us as we begin to roll out School G for the following school year. We're into initiative two, which is around staffing. When we think about those leadership and technical resources, the recommendation here is to hire a CIO for Fairfax County Public Schools. We are almost complete with this particular status. You'll note that the recommendation says to retract the current CIO posting, refine the job description. When we received the, the posting and the job description from the Technology Advisory Council, we were well into the process for identifying our next CIO. So while we did not revise the posting, we are using that job description to create the transition profile for our new CIO as we acclimate the new CIO to Fairfax County Public Schools. And so our process is in its final stages, and we will be prepared to share that information with the board later in the month, our new CIO. The other recommendation that is in progress was hiring a CISO. It's a Chief Information Security Officer. And the recommendation was to do that prior to the end of summer. At this point, we have crafted the job descriptions for the Chief Information Security Officer, and we'll be sharing that with the newly stood-up Technology Advisory Council. And then we've also identified revenue sources in the advent of us moving forward with hiring the CISO for the school system. And again, that's one of those roles that we did want to wait until we had a CIO onboard to help with not only crafting the job description, but also providing input to the hiring. This next recommendation, I'm going to not go too deeply into this recommendation because Kathleen Waltz will be talking a little bit more about our efforts to support our families through a contact support center. And so I'm going to move down to the, the next recommendation here, which is under initiative three, as we think about our infrastructure and our processes. One of those infrastructure items that we were asked to focus on was to take a look at our service level agreements with School G to determine if there were any potential risks or gaps. And members of the Technology Advisory Council did review our, our School G contract. And you'll note that we did identify a gap around the, the possibility of load testing and looking at that within the software-as-a-service environment. We are working with School G on this particular area. We don't feel that it's going to hinder our efforts as part of our pilot. And I also want to point out that, as is different with our contract with our current OMS provider, our contract includes a 99.9% uptime requirement with those penalties and refunds in the event that this performance level is not achieved. So. So we feel that that is a very good contract for us and it's some incentive for Schoology to work very closely with us. I also want to move to the next recommendation, which is complete, which asked us to identify a recommended set of core technologies for fall 2020. What we've done is we have updated our digital ecosystem library, which is essentially a library of all of the resources that we have available for instructional learning for our staff. And what we've done is that we've updated that library and have provided those links to every teacher's desktop so that those links are readily available for our teachers to use as they are embarking on, on virtual learning. And I know that Ms. Waltz is going to share even more about the professional development that we've developed to support our teachers in our virtual learning efforts and back to school efforts. The next recommendation was around an RFPs for a synchronous collaboration tool. It's basically the virtual learning tools that we've come to know and love as we're moving through COVID. We are on track. We have actually put that contract or that RFP on the street and it closes on August 31st and we would be on target then to identify a new vendor for our virtual services at the beginning of November, reminding the board that our contract with Blackboard will be up at the end of the next school year. Initiative four, there are a variety of recommendations as well. I'm going to skip this recommendation because Ms. Waltz will be sharing much more information about the professional development that we provided our teachers. As you'll note, that recommendation is in progress and it will continue throughout the school year. The next recommendation is around identifying devices to meet the needs of differentiated needs of our learners. You'll note that we are able to roll out devices to all of our students in Fairfax County this year. We've rolled devices down to our elementary students. And one thing that we'll be looking at this fall is assessing whether or not the laptop is actually the appropriate device for our youngest learners. And so we will be looking forward to pulling together a group of stakeholders that will include teachers, specialists from multiple departments and disciplines, and administrators to get their feedback on which device they feel is most appropriate for our youngest learners to use. In many cases, those devices are tablets or other types of devices that do not have keyboards. And so again, we'll be pulling that group together to take a closer look at that. A recommendation here next, which is in progress, to build community among our families and educators. I'm going to skip that recommendation because Ms. Waltz will be sharing much more information about our efforts to build community among our families and our educators. We feel very good about those efforts and we've gotten some very good feedback from families about the work that we're doing to build that community. The next recommendation that is complete is a plan to include special populations in our Schoology pilot. As I shared before, our Schoology pilot was well underway and the plan of that was well underway. But you can see here the different groups that are, are very clearly involved in that Schoology and pilot, making sure that we're going to meet the needs of multiple learners in Fairfax County. And those diverse populations of students and the wide range of programs in the pilot schools will allow our project team to collect data on how we're going to then turn Schoology into the tool that we'll be using to support learning for all of our students in Fairfax County Public Schools. And we're coming up on some of our final recommendations here. This is one that I'm most excited about. I'm excited about all of them, but, but this is really around innovation and creating an innovation lab. The recommendation is that we would create this lab to foster an innovative culture in Fairfax County Schools. It would be a physical and virtual property here at FCPS designed to be a safe sandbox for our students to actually get their hands dirty when it comes to technology and really our staff as well. And so we're working very closely with the foundation. We pulled a team together to look at partnering with our business community to support these efforts. Of course, physical space will need to be identified as well as staffing, but these efforts are well underway. And I'm going to give Ms. Waltz an opportunity to go through her slides to talk about the great things we've been doing around family engagement and professional development. So if we could go back to the presentation, that would be fantastic.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for that introduction. And I would like to move to the professional development slide from the PowerPoint. And I believe it's slide six, if I'm not mistaken. As we're pulling that PowerPoint presentation up, I want to say good afternoon. And we are very grateful for the extra two weeks we have to prepare for the virtual reopening of schools. And we thank the school board and Dr. Brabran for this extra time. For the professional development slide, I think it might be slide seven or eight. Wanted to share with you that a lot of the Tech Advisory Council recommendations are embedded here. And the focus of PD is on, is on ensuring teachers and administrators can open the school year successfully. And with that, we have taken a multi-layered approach. First, we have provided resources and supports for staff who create and facilitate online PD by developing a virtual PD hub that includes courses and tools that align with adult learning theory. Second, we've developed a differentiated plan for teachers that includes required and recommended PD that's synchronous, asynchronous, and hybrid. During summer break, and now that with the teacher's return, we are providing PD to prepare for a virtual start and enhance best practices in distance learning, including the International Society for Technology and Education or ISTI Summer Institute. We've had over 1,000 new teachers and new to FCPS teachers access the ISTI micro courses as well. We have required PD for all instructional staff on creating a virtual classroom and high-quality virtual teaching to be completed before September 8. We have training and support for current technology tools. And we're providing PD on building community in a virtual learning environment with virtual orientations for students and families prior to September 8. Support of social and emotional needs, ensuring culturally responsive, inclusive environments, including Module Six of Equity and Cultural responsiveness, family partnerships, and working with students with disabilities and English language learners. So if we could go on to the next slide, I can share with you a little bit about our family and student supports. Beginning tomorrow, one-page tip for online learning success and technology troubleshooting guide translated into eight languages will be mailed to families' homes and distributed during meal and laptop pickup. A variety of family workshops have been and will be offered for support with virtual learning, including topics such as survive and thrive in a virtual learning environment, digital citizenship, and more. Again, a virtual orientation will be provided for students and their families before the school year begins. And then finally, launching on August 26, an online hub for parent self-help tech tips and support will cull existing and new parent resources into one location in multiple languages. This will be a combination of text tip sheets and how-to videos. Additionally, a toll-free number for a parent tech help desk is being established to expand our help desk to support parents. Parents will be able to call this number, report their issue, and receive basic tech support. Parents will not have to go through the teacher or school for tech support like they did in the spring. This alleviates some of the middleman burden from our schools. Parents who speak a language other than English will have access to translators while on the phone. This service provides many, many languages, including the six most commonly spoken in FCPS. Any issues that cannot be resolved by the parent tech help desk can be escalated behind the scenes to the appropriate team in FCPS. And finally, the technology online help form will be a place where older students can click and enter a tech support request ticket on their own, again, without having to go through a teacher for tech support. Parents can also use this portal either to request tech help for younger students or to request help with their parent accounts. The form creates an IT support ticket that is auto-assigned to the T-spec at the student's school for direct help. And I'll turn it back to Marty.
Thanks so much, Kathleen. I do want to talk about some of our next steps with the Technology Advisory Council. First of all, again, wanted to say thank you for our four co-chairs and all of those who provided those, that time for those 200 meetings to provide input to the work of Fairfax County Schools. You'll note, as the superintendent said, he'll be standing up the Tech Advisory Council 2.0 here very shortly. And so he's going to identify those industry experts and their counterparts as we develop those action plans for each item. We'll also be appointing a project manager to monitor the overall progress of the implementation of the recommendations from the Technology Advisory Council. And then we will be providing an update on those additional recommendations to the board before the end of the semester. Now, I know that we were originally slated to stop at this time, but I have just a few things to share about technology and that way we might be able to put a bow on everything as it relates to technology and provide the board an opportunity to speak so that we stay on schedule for our next part of our discussion. So I'm going to move on just a bit quickly to talk about some of the updates that people have been asking about with regard to technology. You can see here, I'm going to talk about a few items as it relates to laptop distribution, Google enterprise licensing, load testing, our, our internet access approach, and some network bandwidth upgrade. The first is laptop distribution. We're very excited that we have received our 32,000 laptops for middle school and the 22,000 laptops for elementary school that are going to go to our sixth graders and fifth graders in our Title I schools. All of the new laptops have been delivered to our schools and have been imaged. And our middle school computer roll down for elementary schools is in progress. Actually, today is the, yesterday was the first day for distribution for our laptops. And once we get all of our middle school laptops distributed, we'll then begin that roll down to our elementary schools, aiming for that full delivery for the start of school. We're also delivering MiFi's as part of the distribution. And one thing that I will share, and it's a bit out of sync here, but we're working very closely and negotiated a partnership with Cox Communications to provide internet access for families who are eligible. And there's criteria, a set criteria that Cox has developed for eligibility for this program. It would allow families to have internet access in their homes at about $995 per month. Those costs would be then assumed by Fairfax County Schools. And it's actually a much more cost-effective way for us to provide internet access for our students and families than our MiFi's. And we would then begin transitioning our families from the MiFi to the Cox program. And we should be getting information out to schools actually this afternoon to provide more information for families. There have been lots of questions around our Google enterprise license. I want to make the, the community well aware that we are in the process of securing the Google enterprise license. It's an upgraded license over the G Suite for Education account that we previously had in Fairfax County Schools. The enterprise license does add functionality across all of our G Suite products. It improves that control of our Google Meet sessions by our teachers. And you can see that we have included a chart that shows the list of features and when they'll be available for our teachers. This is part of a global effort on Google to release these features as part of their enterprise license. And you can see those features that are coming in September, those that are coming in October, and then features coming later in the year, such as hand raising, Q and A, and polling. We've actually polled our principals to get a sense of which products they might be using for the fall. And our principals are going to continue to use Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and many more will be taking advantage of Google Meet as we go on to virtual learning in the fall. There have been lots of questions around load testing for Blackboard. And so we've identified two particular areas here. One is Blackboard Learn, which is our current LMS. And we know that at the beginning of distance learning, there were difficulties with Blackboard Learn being able to accept the load of students and staff accessing the system for learning resources. We've worked all summer long with Blackboard to update our systems and to do extensive load testing to ensure that our students and staff will be able to have accessibility to the platform. And load testing clearly showed an improved ability for the learn platform to successfully handle our parents and students accessing those resources at the same time. And so we feel confident in saying that our teachers can continue to post those asynchronous and, and some synchronous resources to the learn platform. We've also been working very closely with Blackboard on their Blackboard Collaborate Ultra tool. We've shared with the board on, on different occasions that we've worked with Blackboard to confirm their ability to scale up. And they have proven on different occasions that they have the ability to handle loads much greater than those highest load rates that we experienced during the spring. And again, our teachers will be using Blackboard Collaborate Ultra, much in the same way that they did in the spring, to schedule those secure virtual synchronous sessions. We've also provided some supports for students and families to better manage those Blackboard links within their Google calendars. And so that will be part of our resource list for our families. And then lastly, we talk about replacing the MiFi for the home internet approach. I spoke a bit about that earlier. We're very excited about that opportunity for our families. The last piece here is the discussion around our internal internet bandwidth. This isn't going to necessarily be something we focus on for return to school right at the start, but as we think about eventually pivoting to some type of face-to-face instruction, we need to ensure that we have the appropriate level of bandwidth in our schools to, to meet the needs of virtual sessions, these video-type sessions that, that might occur during that time. Our current capacity for these video sessions, it's about 10,000 concurrent users without seeing any other degradation to our network, which then allows us to use that work for so many of the things that we've come to take for granted in Fairfax County. The upgrades that we would engage in and hopefully have up and running by November 1st would double our bandwidth and allow for 20,000 concurrent users who would then be able to engage in those virtual video sessions without any degradation to the network. And again, that's only for the video conferencing aspect of, of our virtual learning. So that in a nutshell, are, those are our technology updates. I have to thank our technology action team that is made up of principals, teachers who have been working all summer long to provide additional input to the work that we're doing. I certainly have to thank our colleagues in ISD and DSS, CCR, all across the system who, who have worked diligently to ensure that we're ready for virtual learning in the fall. And a special shout out goes to my directors in IT who have just done no man's work this entire summer to ensure that we are going to be prepared for a September 8th start for our students and our families. And so with that, I turn it back over to our chair for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. We're very appreciative of all of the information that you have shared. Before we go ahead and recognize the school board members for questions, I would like to welcome Mr. Anabudo, who has joined us. Nathan, would you like to say hello?
Hi, hi, Dr. Anderson. Thank you for letting me say hi. I just want to say apologize to the community. I hadn't received the link until just after you took roll call, but I've been here since then. So thank you. I'm sorry, guys.
Oh, it's fine. We're so glad to have you. Also, on behalf of the board, I would like to extend a very special thank you to Mr. Barone and the rest of the co-chairs, although they're not with us today. We are very appreciative of all of the time that they've taken to ensure our success in a rollout in September for our students. So thank you there. I will now start with our school board members' comments and questions. This section will be three minutes and we will start with Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. First, I want to start by saying I'm
First, I want to start by saying I'm grateful that the superintendent is putting forward, as my dog is grateful too, as you can hear, putting forward the idea of waiving the FCPS on fee. That's something that I've heard from many constituents about. While it's something that I think high school families have grown accustomed to in some degree, it was surprising to many middle school families. So I think that's the right approach. I'll be interested to hear about the financial ramifications of it when we have a further discussion about it in the future. I guess I'd like to start this conversation by asking Mr. Barone a question, if he would entertain it. You know, if you could gauge your confidence in FCPS's technological response for the fall based on where you began your thinking as the task force first initiated its work.
Mr. Frisch, I would characterize it good, you know, there's been obviously a lot of work. We only submitted our report on July 24th. So seeing that of the 17 recommendations, nine of them are already completed. That's obvious, I mean, I would say that's pretty good progress in three short weeks. But in fairness to them, these recommendations have, you know, even as we began the journey of working with FCPS, they've all volunteered to throw in their energies, their passion around making sure that they were addressing these things even in advance of us formally submitting our report. And one other note, I would just say, it's obviously, we, 17 is a lot to get done. If I was to share anything with you, Carl, it would be also focusing on that CIO, making sure the contact center is ready. And then finally, making sure that you, and I know these things are in process or are complete. I would say, making sure you simplify the packages. I know that was one of the top 17, so that teachers and staff really know. I mean, I don't know if you know this, but there are over 500 technologies that this FCPS uses. And so if you could simplify packages, teachers for elementary school use this maybe for grade one. And if you simplified it further for staff so that if they have, the front lines are ready for quick response, because that's really what one of the big complaints is, is that they just want answers. Parents want answers, students want answers. So anyway, those are the three things I would say, good progress so far, nine of the 17 complete and well underway.
Fantastic, and I think you're right to mention the platform diversity that we have. You know, I've spoken to parents who have children in elementary and middle school who are using different things. And for folks that are not necessarily technologically savvy, shifting between varying platforms of the tool can be a bit difficult. That's not to say that, you know, these things weren't gone into with the best of intentions. Right, we want to provide students and families with the best tools we can.
Mr. Frisch, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I think your microphone needs a little adjustment.
Okay.
Sorry if you're a little bit in the tunnel.
Yep, just a second.
Better?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, sorry, and now I have five seconds. On the question of support tickets, one thing that jumped out to me is the idea that a support ticket will be automatically routed to the T-spec at that specific school. I imagine there could be some schools where students will need more support than others, or ratios for T-spec to the number of students and families could be greater. How are we going to, and I think this is probably for Marty, how will FCPS work with T-specs to monitor their bandwidth and address possible support backlogs?
Well, I can say that our network of T-specs, they work together very well as we think about the plan for distributing more than 100,000, 130,000 laptops over a summer that was developed by our T-specs. I feel confident in their ability to collaborate with one another to handle the load if there are more tickets in any one school or over another. So while some schools may not experience very many tickets and others may experience more, they'll jump right in and pick up wherever the need is.
Okay, and then on the issue of access to internet, I think it's smart to be transitioning towards, you know, stable ISP support through Cox and others rather than MiFi. One thing I've heard from many instructional assistants and some teachers about their shift towards internet at home. You know, I think many people take it for granted when they have at home a stable, fast, secure internet connection that can process gigabits every month with no real financial strain. Not all teachers and instructional assistants have that. What can we do, what are we doing to help teachers and IAs and other classroom professionals who lack adequate internet at home? And can the MiFi devices that we will be trading out in favor of these ISPs be used to support our staff?
So Mr. Frisch, you're, we're thinking, like in this particular instance, our primary focus has been in our students and families. And so as we transition, we know that we'll be bringing MiFi's back into our inventory. Perhaps not all of them, we know that in some, with some of our families, with our schools that experience high mobility, an in-house solution may not be the best solution for some of those families. So we'll still need MiFi's for students. But as we bring those MiFi's back into inventory, we can figure out ways to develop criteria for how we might provide that service for staff. Especially, we have staff who live in rural areas, have no access to even the Cox or any other type of in-home provider. So we're taking a look at that, but primarily want to make sure that we have our students first, and then we'll focus on our staff.
My last question, on the issue of load testing, I think it's, you know, important to stress to the community that that work has been done. You know, I noticed there's a distinction in that we're getting assurances from Blackboard about Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and its bandwidth having supplied service to entities far larger in user numbers than us. I'm interested if our experts, Mr. Barone, does that sound like a reasonable assurance on the Collaborate Ultra platform? Or should we be pursuing some sort of bandwidth testing there? I'm not even sure if that is possible for both platforms. And that's why we haven't done bandwidth testing for Collaborate Ultra?
Well, I mean, I'd have to defer to Marty and his team here, but as one of the original founders of Blackboard, it's obviously been tough for me. You know, we've, we obviously, for those of you who know the history of Blackboard, there were three of us that originally founded it back in 1997 with a, with a vision to transform education. And I think we all, for those of us who were with the original group back then, we, we've, we've watched the journey, we've been applauding their successes and obviously wincing at their disappointments and challenges. And this has been one of them. And I would say in terms of your question, Carl, the issue is really around appropriate load testing. And unless we could get in there to really determine what was done, it's hard to comment. I, I know that we encourage strongly, Marty and your team, to make sure that you, you really tested it for surge capacity, not just average load capacity. And so I'll defer to you in terms of whether or not we were able to get all of the different load testing completed.
So we were able to do that with the learn platform. And in our conversations with Blackboard as it relates to Blackboard Collaborate Ultra, and given that it is a cloud-based, they have done their own testing on that particular end of it. And also then note to our highest level of users during the spring and that they were well able to take not only our user load, but their whole Eastern Shore user load, which was well over 800,000 to 900,000 concurrent users at a time. And so feeling confident that based on having upwards of 800,000 users concurrently using the system at any given time, that our usage wouldn't have any, that they wouldn't have any issues with our particular load. So they do their own internal testing. There aren't ways for us to test that load using our systems on their system. But we have to look at past performance on their highest usage days. And I feel confident that we'll be good for the fall.
Marty, my question would maybe, are we using the same platform that they, we at FCPS using the same platform that they tested in Eastern Shore?
Yes, we're using the same platform for Blackboard Collaborate Ultra, yes.
Okay.
I would just, you know, my last thing, and then I'm done. You know, in the run-up to the spring, we relied on their word for it in many respects. And, you know, telling us that it worked elsewhere, in my book, that wouldn't be sufficient. And I think that we should be asking them to practice due diligence on the Collaborate Ultra platform like they have with the learn platform. We were given assurances about the learn platform in the spring. Those assurances did not check out in practice. So maybe the result of them doing their due diligence is coming back and saying, we're good to go. That's fantastic, at least we did our part on our end. I would hate to be caught with our pants down once again, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch, I think that's your time. Ms. Omage, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Yeah, I'll start by thanking Mr. Barone and of course, you know, Dr. Braybrand, Marty, and everyone who's been working on this. I, you know, have my list of questions. Before that, though, I will say, I was not actually aware of your affiliation, Mr. Barone, in advance. And a bit concerned, you know, at the top of my mind here, potential conflict of interest or challenges there. But with that said, I'd love to hear, as a tech council, what, where you guys are now with approving what the rollout potentially will be in the fall. I mean, it's going off the line, along the lines of what was just discussed, but ensuring that these mistakes don't happen because we seem to be kind of in a similar place where we're relying on external testing and we're not 100% from what I'm hearing.
How would I say your first name?
Abrar, yeah, thank you.
Abrar? Two things, one is I have no affiliation with Blackboard, I just, today. I mean, it's obviously, I attain is completely agnostic to educational platforms, though we have a lot of experience. We serve two primary markets, government and education. And so we have a lot of experience, we see the alternative platforms. And we, you know, you went through a process. In fact, we had our instructional technology work stream take a look at the process you used for selecting Schoology. And we were, we were pleased with what we saw. And so again, no, no affiliation, and we're pleased that you're moving in the direction you are. As it relates to the potential rollout and readying for the school year, I can tell you this, there's no perfect plan. And all, we did our best to look at what we felt were all the different domains that needed to be addressed and readying for the FY21 school year. And that's how we ended up with the seven work streams. And so we tried, we did our best, and I think it's like, there's no foolproof plan. But we believe by addressing these areas, you reduce the probability and the possibilities for challenges that you faced in the spring. I know that's not a perfect answer, Abrar.
Yeah, so then I, moving from here, what will the continued relationship look like in monitoring, following up on where we are with these goals and the tech council?
So while this council is being sunset, I know that Dr. Braybrand is standing, is going to be establishing a standing committee, a little smaller and a little probably easier for him to, and his staff to manage. But the idea here is, is to then build upon these 67 recommendations and then provide oversight, because some of them frankly needed to be tuned and continue to be monitored in terms of progress.
Can you speak a little more to that oversight piece, what that will look like? I mean, frankly, I'm very concerned about the implementation and ensuring that, you know, we do a diagnosis of what's on the ground, the needs, and that our large system goals are actually achieving the intended objectives. So I'd love to hear a little more specificity, if you have it at this point, understanding that you may not.
Sure. What we see across large school districts is they, they too are advised by a committee, a standing committee that has done something similar to what we did in terms of providing recommendations and counsel on the technology posture for these unified school districts. And so that's the reason why I think initially, when, when all of us volunteered, and like I mentioned, there were over 150 volunteers, and we called it back to 30, just so it would become more manageable. But our focus was to triage the patient in the spring and ready them for exiting the hospital, if you will, and then the next school year. My counsel to you would be to establish this council, to build upon what we did, and then to provide monitoring and oversight to ensure it's an independent advisory body so that you, you get that counsel from an outside-in perspective on how are you doing. And for the board, it's a wonderful vehicle too, because then you're able to, you know, you have a check and balance, if you will, in terms of an asset.
Yeah, fair. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, it seems that, you know, the standing committee will have more to share on that. I say to my colleagues and perhaps to Dr. Braybrand, I'm concerned at an untrained eye looking at the implementation piece, right? And monitoring and doing the oversight. The technical expertise that you all have provided and so graciously offered, really pro bono for our school system is something that we would obviously need, need in some, in some sense moving forward and giving, giving y'all's, again, expertise on the topic. I'll direct my question, since on a related note, the implementation piece, I'd love to hear from, you know, Dr. Braybrand, Marty, about the responsiveness to whatever happens when we do begin implementing this, what our plans are to ensure we have, whether it's checkpoints, flags, as we begin implementing this. Especially when I'm thinking of the piece of internet accessibility, the MiFi devices and all of that, which was commented on, the promises made about language accessibility. What, what systems do we have right now to diagnose the need to ensure that our implementation is actually meeting it? I guess rather than checking off a box in a sense.
Well, I guess I would say first that it has a lot to do what will be happening, what has happened this summer with regard to outreach that our principals and our school-based staff have been doing with regard to families. And this continued outreach that we have with families as we're providing laptops and actually assessing better the needs of our families and finding those needs as it relates to internet connectivity. Certainly, I think that we'll be in a much better place, given that we'll be providing laptops for all of our students. And so we can ensure that all of our students will have access to a device where perhaps they didn't have that access in the fall. I know that we have tightened our protocols around attendance and engagement for students as it relates to the training that our teachers have had in reaching out to students to ensure that we're meeting the needs of those students and families. We'll be engaging our support staff in many different ways that we didn't do in the spring to ensure that we continue to have that continuous outreach to families to get that feedback so that we can work very quickly to meet their needs. So as it relates to ensuring that we're meeting the needs of families, we can only do so much when we know what their needs are. And so that, that human interaction that we're doing now, that we'll continue to do through the fall, will serve us well in that, in that regard.
Yeah, I think that's the piece I'm a little concerned about, you know, to specify, for example, with the Talking Points app, right? That's incredible, by the way, very grateful to see that addition. But it's one thing to say, as a division, we provide the Talking Points app, But it's one thing to say as a division, we provide the Talking Points app and another thing for a parent to be aware and a teacher to be aware that that's a tool and to actually use it, right? So that's the piece I'm concerned about. And finally, I mean, thank you for all.
Thank you, Ms. Omage. I appreciate that. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Hi there. I first wanted to also thank the Technology Council representatives and volunteers. I was fortunate to be one of the school board people on that council. And I just want to say, participating in those meetings, it was really heartwarming to see how excited our staff was to work with this caliber of individuals and gather information and help us move forward. And the innovation and thought was absolutely incredible. Thank you so much. A couple of questions. I had a question maybe along some of the same lines as my previous colleagues. But I wanted to ask Mr. Barone and Mr. Smith and perhaps even Dr. Braybrand. I want to know what is it that is keeping you awake at night when you think about September 8th being just around the corner? And your answer may be a technology issue, question. But we also have a very large program management plan that you submitted to us and, you know, that covers a number of areas. So especially Marty and Dr. Braybrand, if there's something, you know, not necessarily technology, but in, you know, something else in that program management plan that is making you nervous, kind of want to know what that is so we can pay attention.
So I could chair Ms. Tolan, that one of the things that, and, you know, I, I've been sleeping better these past few weeks, but there still are some things that keep me up at night. One of the things that I'm feeling much better about and hearing today about the internet connectivity through COX, that is one piece where I know that once we are able to do that outreach to families, that we'll be able to make a change and make a difference in the lives of not only students, but in the difference in the lives of families with regard to their ability to access the internet. I know that some of the concerns that I've had around the tech support, ensuring that when you're, when you're rolling out 130,000 computers, more than you had in the, in the fall or in the spring, ensuring that we have the right level of tech support for our families, ensuring that we're meeting their needs in a variety of languages. Those are the things that are keeping me up at night, ensuring that we have those supports in place, ensuring that we have all of the videos created in multiple languages, that we have all of those supports for our principals so that they have the right language to work with families. Those are the things that are keeping us going and have been taking up most of my time as we're developing our return to school. So I'll let Dr. Braybrand share any of the things as it relates to, those are my pieces with technology. As COO, I have other things that keep me up as it relates to our staff, as it relates to ADA, as it relates to the budget and budget development process. So there are things that keep me up that are overall related to our return to school, but those are the technology pieces.
Ms. Tolan, I would say in, in full candor, I've never slept better in the last three months than in the last. I feel our team has risen to the occasion. 200 meetings from this Technology Council, 200 meetings. I'd love to see a school district that has done this much work in this short of a time. As Mr. Barone said, there's no perfect solution, but we've kept every box, held every meeting, project management, every line that we can. And we're gonna continue to do that even as we're in the middle of preparing for that first day of school opening virtually. I, I, I really think our folks have gone above and beyond. We're, we're going to continue to use the outside expertise with the Standing Committee so that, well, the first day goes well, what about the next week or the next month? And I think the Standing Committee is gonna give us the ability to do that. I don't want to get ahead of what Mr. Smith said. We have some information to share with the board later this month and want to talk about and sharing information on a, a future CIO who will bring additional skills and insights for us. So I'm very excited. I'm confident about where we are right now. We still have a lot of hard work to do. But we have done everything that I think is humanly possible to take our lessons learned and apply them and take the recommendations given and apply them as we start the beginning of school.
Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. Okay, a little more specific. Around Schoology, we're rolling that out, piloting in that this year. And of course, I know people are nervous about trying something new, you know, as we're doing virtual learning, but completely understand the timing, et cetera. What can, can you just talk a little bit about what we have in place to sort of track the progress of, you know, how our schools that are piloting Schoology are, you know, are doing? Things that need improvement, things that are going great and we need to make sure we, you know, keep track of and need to share? Just how does that process work?
So the process works. We have a cross-functional Schoology team that's made up of representatives from multiple, multiple departments in Fairfax County. And they're meeting weekly. They meet weekly with, as a team, to meet the needs of the principals that bring issues forward, teachers that bring issues forward, ESPITS who bring issues forward. And then we work to troubleshoot those issues to ensure that we're providing the best support for those schools. We'll be following and tracking those schools throughout the year, checking in with them again weekly to ensure that the tools are working as designed. If there is any input from these teams regarding the use of the tool and how it might make, meet the needs of our different types of learners in Fairfax County, we'll be taking that information and then transitioning that to working with Schoology and that particular Schoology team. And so, you know, just recently, we worked on an issue that has been going on for a couple of weeks where our team has been working with the Schoology team on an issue with courses. We have worked to create some solutions for the, those course issues. And we'll then be rolling that information down to principals actually today and tomorrow and building it into our professional development. Those professional development sessions are occurring even as we speak. We're providing support for teachers to help them upload content into the L M S, helping them schedule their sessions using the tool. So it, it is a model that we have utilized as we implemented F C P S on and will continue to use this model with the 17 schools to garner input from them and use that input to make the product better for our students as we roll it out to the entire system.
Thank you. The other question that I had was around looking at, you said further into the fall, we'll be really looking at devices for special needs students, our youngest students, et cetera. Can you just talk a little bit more about how that fits? Since I know we're giving computers to families that need it, even if, you know, for some of these young learners, because that's what we have available now. Over the long term, how do you see these other devices fitting in? Is that something that will be in the next budget cycle and not available till next fall? Or how do you view that?
So I, I think that that, it begets a further conversation with the board around the rollout of F C P S on. Currently, we have F C P S on at the high school and the middle school. The devices that we're providing now are really for, as a stopgap for access for virtual learning. And so it's, it's us bringing back information to the board about screen time, about the effects of, of certain technologies. So there's that piece of it. The second piece then is that we want to be able to make some recommendations about the most appropriate devices. So we're going to stand that group up here in the fall to get a better sense of the most appropriate device for our primary students. We did some of that with the pilot for F C P S on. And as part of that pilot, we know that some of our schools were using tablets and other touch devices. But we want to bring that to the board as a package. It, it could be as part of the next budget cycle. It could be identifying funds if we want to do something a little more quickly. But I think that we would want to make those decisions with having all of the information and not just make some decisions on devices for primary students without putting that in the context of F C P S on for elementary school.
Got it. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I certainly echo my colleagues in saying, you know, we're really grateful for this. I think in the, to answer Ms. Tolan's question, what keeps me up at night is making sure that on September 8th, everybody can get in and access all of the amazing things that I keep seeing our educators coming up with this summer. So I'm grateful to have more peace of mind than I did before we saw all of this. And definitely to Mr. Smith, I don't have any idea how you have enough hours in the day to do your job and to have taken on the technology piece. So we're very grateful for you and we hope that you will get to sleep once again soon. I just had a few questions. One is coming back to the COX issue and I'm thrilled to hear it. I know that the MiFi's have been spotty for some of our families. We've definitely heard in some of our communities some issues. So I think this sounds like a really wonderful stopgap. But my question is around, since laptop distribution has already started this week, I, I know in a perfect world, we would have been able to have these conversations as we handed out laptops. That timing has not worked. So just some more specificity around making sure that we are doing videos and phone messages in our eight languages and how we'll be using our parent liaisons to make sure that we can get the information about the COX network connectivity to our families.
So, so that's part of the plan. We're working and developing communications even as we speak. Again, we were, we have some things developed for communication purposes, but we did want to make sure that we had all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted before doing some of that. And then, as I shared with Ms. Omage earlier, it's really about our interface with the principals and our school-based staff and having those conversations. Just as you said, our parent liaisons, reaching back out to families. We have a very good sense of where those MiFi's are currently with our, with our students. And so we'll be able to reach out to those families and help them transition if the, the COX program is actually going to meet their needs a bit better. One thing, I know that there were questions about MiFi's earlier in the spring. We have changed the contract for our current MiFi service. And so we're moving to an unlimited service for those MiFi's. So those families who will continue to use MiFi's will have unlimited service versus the service patterns that we saw in the spring. So for those that are going to continue, I feel it's going to be a much better environment for them or experience for them. And for those, again, certainly wanting to transition as many of our families as we can to an, an internet asset, access experience that will provide support for the entire family.
That's outstanding. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Another question I had, I know that we budgeted for new ESPITS and T specs to make sure that our schools had better technology support. And I wondered if you could give us an update if all of those positions have been hired?
Well, I can't say if all the positions have been hired. I know that one of the things that we were concerned about as we started the summer was that those individuals who would be doing the hiring for these positions would also be involved in, you know, developing the plans and doing the rollout and doing the imaging. And so I believe that we are on our way toward hiring those positions. I can get information for the board to let you know exactly how many of those positions we've hired.
That would be super helpful. Thank you. The last, I just wanted to, this is more of a mention, I think, than a question. But just to let our colleagues know, Ms. Bukarski and I have been talking for some time about, about a forum topic where we would include a new technology advisory committee to the school board. I think that's a conversation that we all have probably had individually with one another many times about the need to update our committee structure generally. But I think certainly a technology advisory committee would be very helpful with an oversight body like the school board. So that's on our list as well. And again, just appreciative of all that's happening and look forward to, to a very successful launch of our virtual school year on the 8th. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Besides Mohizer?
Thank you. And I'm glad to follow up on that. I'm glad to follow up on what Ms. Cohen just said because that's part of the forum topic that Ms. Mary and I had submitted back in February to look at advisory committees. So, and to look at what would be best serving us now in the 21st century. So thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Barone and our tech council for all your hard work and for our staff for your hard work. I know, I really appreciate your, your time and expertise here in guiding us. So thank you for that. I have, I have a few questions. First of all, I, I am concerned, as what Carl said, about relying on Blackboard Collaboratives statements around load testing and search testing as Mr. Barone mentioned. And I understand, Marty, what you're saying in terms of the spring, but we didn't have the same schedule in the spring that we do now in terms of everybody logging on at the same time and for as long. So if you could talk about why you think those assurances will still be good for this new schedule, I'd appreciate that.
So, and I may ask Sandy Kretzer to, she's on the call, I don't know if she's on the meeting, to, to share a few things. As we've been working to load test Blackboard and the Learn platform itself, part of that load testing was also then testing and, and launching those, those sessions for Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. And so we shared our schedule with Blackboard. We know that the issues around the, the load is really about concurrent users. When you look at Blackboard Collaborate Ultra, some of the issues that we had in the spring were around our ability for users accessing Blackboard Collaborate Ultra sessions through the Learn platform. So issues that occurred, we had students and staff who were accessing the Learn platform for asynchronous resources prior to standing up any kind of virtual learning. And what was happening, students and staff were accessing and we really saw no issues with that. Then as we stood up and had people actually access those links through the Learn platform, we had issues with load. Our internal servers and systems couldn't handle the synchronous loads of everyone accessing those sessions at the same time based on the schedule. What we then did is we separated the two platforms. We separated the platforms. They were no longer reliant upon one another for access. And so families and students and staff still utilize the Learn platform for resources, but then solely utilize Blackboard Collaborate Ultra with individual links to access the system. So while we were accessing Blackboard Collaborate Ultra with individual links, at no time this summer did we experience any issues with load. We had multiple users on for extended periods of time. And during our, our, our spring, we had no issues with load for families and students using Blackboard Collaborate Ultra as a standalone. And we, while some of the testing included using the Learn platform to access those sessions, we were not confident with the numbers that we were seeing from Blackboard and our staff to use the Learn platform to access Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. We saw improvements in the load, but we were not confident in that load and those numbers to allow students to use the Learn platform. So just as we did in the spring, the Learn platform is there for students, families and staff to use for learning resources. And Blackboard Collaborate Ultra will be utilized for sessions and families and students will access those sessions in individual secure links that come into their email. will access, access those sessions in individual secure links that come into their email. So we will, we will not see that confluence of the two systems where we had the issue with load that placed us in the situation that we were in the spring.
One more thing, Ms. Ismaheiser, Sandy Kretzer's on the line. I believe that Mr. Smith invited her to respond as well to that question.
Dr. Anderson, may I just clarify the question for, before she responds?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate that, Marty. I guess my concern really is just around using Blackboard Collaborative Ultra, not the going through learn, given the robust schedule and number of students logging on at the same time on September 8th, which is different than both what happened this summer as well as once the issues resolved last spring. So if you could address that level of load in this robust of a schedule, that would be what I'm looking for. Thank you.
And I can perhaps let Ms. Kretzer address that a bit better. But as it relates to our, our robust schedule and the number of concurrent users, we have shared that information with Blackboard. And again, given our, our highest rates of usage over the summer, and given that we were part of a much larger environment with many more concurrent users, they felt that the system, and feel that the system will expand to meet our load needs. But Ms. Kretzer, if you have anything else to share?
Thank you, Marty. You did a great job describing that. One of the other things that I just wanted to add that we discovered in our, our very extensive testing is that in collaboration with Blackboard, we were able to make the Blackboard Learn System not only handle more users at one time, but also be resilient. Before, everybody hit it and it died. After we finished the testing and adjustments with Blackboard, the system is able to get slow and then recover. So that was a very important distinction for us. The other distinction is that collaborate is elastic and it is in the cloud. And we have done, had extensive conversations with Blackboard and seen their customer base and looked at outages. And we feel very confident, I feel very confident as a technology person, that Blackboard Collaborate can handle our load. We just don't want to pinch it down by going through Blackboard barn.
And if I could, Rachna and Marty and Sandy, please correct me if this is not an accurate assessment, but to be absolutely clear for this board and the community, Blackboard Collaborate never had a load problem. It never had a load problem in March, in April, in May or June. We had a load problem with Blackboard 24/7. And we moved to 24/7 because we did not secure Blackboard Collaborate Ultra links correctly. We didn't have a load problem with Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. We had a security problem because we gave inappropriate direction to our teachers about how to do the links. Instead of secure links, they had guest links. So we've never had a load problem with Blackboard Collaborate. Blackboard Collaborate has users three times the size of Fairfax County Public Schools and has had no problems. We've worked with them very closely and we do not believe that we will have a future problem with them because we've never had a problem with them previously in Blackboard Collaborate with load. Mr. Smith, Ms. Kretzer, is that a correct statement? Have I assessed that correctly?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would, I would still suggest perhaps doing some testing just to make sure that Blackboard is what they're saying is, is going to stand out. But I, I respect Ms. Kretzer's IT expertise and if our council thinks that we're where I define, then I will defer to that, but I'm just going to put that out there. I wanted to talk a little bit about the community engagement building with our technology tools. This wasn't really addressed in our technology section so far. I have concerns about Blackboard and, and the way we can sort of view people and how that's going to work with engaging our students and keeping them engaged. I heard a lot about disengaged students last spring. I know you're talking about Google Meet, but I also hear you say that our, our principals are kind of committing to Blackboard Collaborate. How are we going to encourage them in this year to maybe switch if we have a platform to something that allows for better engagement of our students? I'm very concerned about disengaged students here.
Oh, no. So while I said that our, we have principals who are committed to Blackboard Collaborate, we, we have principals who are committed to Google Meet as well. So we understand the, sort of the, some of the issues that we have with that engagement piece and the, the lack of seeing as many faces as possible. And we've certainly built that into our, our requirements as we're looking for a new virtual tool. So there are limitations currently with the Blackboard Tool. We know that Google Meet does provide more functionality and we have more principals who are going to take advantage of that functionality. There really isn't much that we can do as it relates to the current Blackboard Collaborate Ultra Tool. But again, it is the basis of men, of the many requirements that we have for a new tool that we would need, that would, it would have to have that functionality to allow for the seeing of faces and the ability to interact.
I guess I'll just put out my concern right now is that, that's, that's great and I really appreciate that, but this is a really crucial time for our students, having been out of our school buildings for quite a while, entering new classes. And so whatever you can do to really encourage our principals to make that switch to Google Meets once we have that capability this year instead of long-term, I think is vital to the success of this year. So I'm just going to put that out there. I also wanted to ask about, you mentioned an orientation, which is great and I appreciate that, but is there going to be a chance for some of our students to have more sort of jumpstart guided practice on how to do this? So September 8th, when they start with already a two-week delay to our start of our school year, there isn't that sort of rough start for them, especially for certain sped kids or younger kids who might need more direct guided instruction and practice time? Do we have anything that built in that's sort of separate from just a one-time orientation or a, a shortage orientation for everybody?
So I, I know our region assistants and superintendents have been working very closely with our schools on the orientations piece. So I don't know if one of them could weigh in on, on opportunities for students to have that kind of access. I, I know again that we're building a, a lot of that information into some of the tools that we're providing, the videos, the tutorials. But again, I know that, that we will hit that during the orientation, but I'm not sure if we're going to do that in, in the other venue.
I'm just concerned about the, for some students, an orientation with everybody is just not enough time to do it, to really have the practice they need to be really successful on September 8th. And, and I don't want to have to delay their learning any longer if we can do something so proactively ahead of time.
Thank you. I, I, that was time, Ms. Ismaheiser, but I see Ms. Bayning has her hand up to respond to the inquiry that Mr. Smith spoke about. Ms. Bayning, please go ahead. Not quite. If you can come a little closer to the mic.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to provide additional information. You know, we have made an expectation that all teachers provide this orientation opportunity, you know, really just to make sure, you know, get them excited to really meet the teacher, build those relationships that we know are so very vital to the success of our students, make sure they know how to connect and access their classes and their schedule and such. I, I do know that many of our schools, to your point, Ms. Ismaheiser, are also looking at ways to connect with students individually. You know, many of our schools in the past have done welcome walks, especially at the elementary level where they've gone up, you know, the front door and introduced themselves. You know, obviously with our current reality, we're not doing that, but they are looking at creative ways to maintain those cultural aspects of our, you know, our school culture that we know are so important. So having some one-on-one meetings with students and families virtually, can't say that's definitely happening in all schools, but just know that those are the solutions, those out-of-the-box ideas, you know, that, that we're talking with principals about knowing how important those relationships are and the social emotional needs of our students. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Bayning. Ms. Corbett Sanders, please go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm glad to follow my previous colleagues because first I want to thank everybody for their hard work, especially the tech council. I am especially pleased to see that we are going to address the concern that I had sent to the superintendent last week regarding access to the, the FCPS ON fee. So thank you for that. I fully support waiving those and I'm very pleased to hear that we are doing more for the broadband connectivity. I do want to know whether or not we can access e-rate funds for that $9.95 a month fee because if we have 2,300 families, which is how many MiFi's we distributed, then that ends up being about a half a million dollars or so a year. I have a question for you, Mr. Broney. You all focused on two initiatives. You focused on triaging the current situation and then making sure that we were ready for the next year. In doing that, in hearing Mr. Smith's presentation, we're waiting to have the CIO to be appointed soon. We're waiting for CIS to be appointed and we're waiting for a project manager to be appointed. Is that consistent with a triage situation? Or should we have addressed these much more aggressively upfront?
I mean, I, I think I can share with you my individual preferences and I'm not speaking necessarily on behalf of the council. You know, I think I would have preferred in this situation, and it's hard to second guess at this point, but I would say it would have been nice to hire an external firm to help out during the interim period. I think we actually recommended that, but I think it, it's just, I think budgetary constraints and other constraints probably prevented that from being a real, realistic alternative. I think the most important thing is really to get your leadership in place as you, as you get ready for the school year and the CIO is a critical position.
And you recommend.
The CISO can actually, not that, look, I, I would, I probably would be shot by my technology infrastructure and operations work stream because I, they would probably want both concurrently if they had their choice. But I would say if I was putting as a priority, and again, I've been a CEO a couple of different times now, and my preference is to make sure you've got your, your chief information officer in place and as part of the leadership team. Absent that, I would make sure that you had somebody with that expertise. And I believe Marty seems to be kind of filling, and, and I think that was recognized, he's a multi-hatted individual capable of actually filling that as best as he can in the interim.
We certainly are blessed by Mr. Smith's incredible commitment to FCPS. I agree with you. Thank you. My next question really focuses on the other component which you mentioned, which was equity, access and security. And when we look at where we are facing opening of schools in the fall, that equity, access and security is what keeps me up at night. And from an equity point of view, I'm, I would like to better understand, and I don't know who should answer this, but better understand why we did not prioritize the devices for our younger learners in, as we got ready for school. And my reasoning for this is that we need to capture young minds from the beginning. And if they get turned off by having to deal with a clunky laptop, or we have some kids who can access using their iPads because their families can afford it and others doing the clunky laptop, does that create an equity issue for us? And then on a security point of view, I'd love to better understand what we are doing beyond just the login security to ensure that we have security of our systems, such as how we're going to ensure secure assessments or security in the assessment process, how we're going to collect data beyond the, if I can just finish the sentence, collecting data beyond just the, the engagement process, but data on metrics for success for our students.
Mr. Smith, please go ahead.
So I can answer the question in terms of laptops for learners. When we initially expanded FCPS ON with the middle school, and then as we looked at purchasing computers and wanting to ensure that we had the best device for our, our students at the elementary level, we chose to provide those devices to our sixth graders and our fifth graders for some of the same questions that you raised about the most appropriate device for our younger learners. And we hadn't done really the due diligence in terms of the review of what that best device would be. And in terms of needing to have a quick turnaround to get devices, it was best for us to purchase those devices for our sixth grade students and our fifth grade students, while at the same time ensuring that we were still providing high-quality and devices to our, the remaining elementary students. We're not using devices for elementary students unless they have camera capabilities, the speaker and microphone capabilities. So it is a particular level of device, but I agree with you on whether or not there might be a better device for our primary students. We just didn't have the time to do that due diligence to, to do the research on what would be that best device and secure that device for the fall. But we are committed to doing that and bringing that work back to the board, sharing with you what that research is, and then giving you a much more full picture of what FCPS ON would look like for our elementary students.
Thank you. I also believe there was some.
Parveen, say that again?
I, I believe that Ms. Corbett Sanders had posed a question regarding your thinking regarding equity.
Well, I, I would defer to my work stream on that. You know, we actually had a, a one on that was specifically focused in on that. In fact, we came up with 16 different recommendations that was really designed to address the end-to-end spectrum on special access needs, including equity. Now, we didn't cover, we probably could have gone deeper, but I think that group addressed a considerable landscape in the short period of time they had to work together. I think also, Karen, you mentioned one of the other critical items that still needs to be addressed and I, I, we didn't get a chance to really dive deep into it. And, and that is the data around metrics for success. I know that's, that's obviously one of the critical areas that, that any, any school board and frankly, any leadership team and, and school districts needs to make sure that they have in place. So, you know, I, you know, in regard to that.
The last piece of that was on security and security assessments and ensuring that we address that as well.
And I know that Dr. Presidio has been working within the instructional group to take a look at not only instruction, but also grading and assessments. And so I don't know if Dr. Presidio has anything.
His hand is up, Mr. Smith. So if you're ready, Dr. Presidio, please go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So just real briefly, we, we do have an assessment system that is, does provide a secure assessment platform for students to take virtual assessments that requires them to log in and have authentication. So we've had that for a number of years and have used that in different environments, the online campus and other hybrid learning environments. So we do have that in place. And, and also just real briefly, Ms. Corbett Sanders asking some really good questions about success metrics. And, you know, I think we need to continue that conversation with the board, but, you know, we do have a number of opportunities to continue to look at some of the success metrics that we had from the spring, when we did some evaluation of distance learning in the spring. And, you know, those range all the way from attendance and participation rates. Certainly we can look at performance in terms of course performance and how students are, are actually doing in their courses, back to stakeholder satisfaction surveys that we ran in the spring. And I know that the Office of Research and Strategic Improvements will be working to do ongoing program evaluation of our virtual learning efforts during the school year. So that's something that we can continue to work with the board on as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Presidio. I believe that was the last of your questions, Ms. Corbett Sanders. There's one more?
Yes, actually, I wanted to hear from Mr. Broney about the security piece.
Thank you.
I, I think, again, the technology infrastructure and operations team did the best they could to address it. And I think that's the reason why they recommended both, not only do we need to put a CISO in place, but also to move toward the standards-based environment and making sure the, you know, the ISO standards are being met and, and, and the like here. I think the recommendation was more specifically around the NIST standard for security. And so again, And so again, I, we didn't, you know, we didn't get a chance to really assess the posture. I think you would actually have to get an external provider to do that. On the other hand, we did lay the framework for you to have success there in security.
And our, our network folks wholeheartedly supported the recommendations around a CISO.
Thank you very much to both of you. I believe now we are on to Ms. Marin.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. I want to speak to just two points briefly. One is about the tech council work. Mr. Barone, thank you to you and your colleagues for stepping up as citizens to support our public schools. And I appreciate you acknowledging that our staff has been working hard. And I'm also impressed that so much of the recommendations, so many of them have already been responded to. And I, I'm glad that we're looking forward and we're taking the frustration and challenge of the problems and that we're keeping, we're going forward into the system. I, I think the work that's been done the last few weeks and months is a really big thing to have, happen in any organization and during a pandemic doubly so. But, you know, I just want to share more with my colleagues, you know, as a board member, I'm trying to remain focused on the systemic oversight piece because it's tempting for me to want to learn more about a specific app or a position. But, you know, again, when I look at the systemic strengthening that's happening, you know, the thing, the angle that I want to keep us focused on is where does the breakdown that can and does happen? Where does that happen when we're starting at the systemic where it's all planned and figured out down to that individual classroom teacher and student? Because we have this high level planning limitation, but if it's communications or if it's process, we need to make sure that if there's needs or malfunctions, that that goes back up to the ESPE, the T-SPEC and the department. So, you know, for instance, someone mentioned Talking Points app to support speakers of other languages. You know, I'm told that we have this, but I'm also hearing from constituents that it's not available. So we need to be really focused on these disconnects because that is what is going to keep people's frustration down for teachers and students and families. And we, we really have to focus on that because we are all already very stressed. So that's one thing, Mr. Smith, I'd like you to please consider and share any thoughts on. But the other thing is, Mr. Smith, could you please just state in real clear terms what it looks like for a student not in the Schoolology pilot to use Blackboard and Google Classroom? Like, I, I just went through the spring with my two elementary school kids and I think I understand what is being proposed for the fall, but it still sounds like Google is there as an option. Blackboard Collaborate is there for the meeting online, but then also there could be content for parents to draw down. And this goes back to that comment earlier about too many applications. So can you just like share with us, like what does the student experience expect to look like? And also for teachers, and do we need to tweak that and make it just real simple for folks? So thank you.
So, so you're, you're talking about the Fairfax County conundrum of wanting to have universal schools of thought, but also provide flexibility and individuality. So that's, that's a conundrum that we now only see with technology. It's something that we, we live with every day in Fairfax County. And so we do have some schools where principals have said that we would like to see one particular virtual tool used for learning. And in those same schools, we have families who say, yes, but I really want my teachers to use Google, or I really want my teachers to be able to use Google and a mixture of Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. So it's wanting to have uniformity, but also wanting to provide flexibility. For a student, it, it can be different for individual students. Some students might be in a total virtual environment where their teacher, all of their teachers are using Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. We have some students who might be using Blackboard Collaborate Ultra for a majority of their day and then doing small breakout rooms or breakout groups using Google tools. We have some students who might be experiencing, you know, different environments. But I know that we're working very closely with principals to ensure that students aren't feeling that tug where in a high school setting, you have two, two teachers who are using Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and three who are using Google Meet. We know that our, our school team are trying to provide some consistency for students. And so while it's not ideal, I, I think that as we move toward this more virtual environment that we may see ourselves in a little, a little longer, we might have to create some rules around the work. We also think that as we look at the RFP for a new virtual tool, we very well, very well may land on one device or one tool for everyone. And if we do do that, it'll take away some of the uncertainty that our students and families might be feeling. I don't have an answer for you other than the fact, the fact that we recognize it, we do our best to mitigate it. And we know that we built that into the RFP to ensure that we can land on a tool that can be used to meet all of our staff and student needs.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. It certainly isn't new to me, but thank you for packaging all that way. I will just suggest then that in the communications coming up, that we make that clear to all parents because there is a lot of confusion about why is everything so different and what am I using? So whether that's one of those nice infographics that staff designs or it's per school, I think that would really go a long way to help people feel like they're.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marin. Well timed. Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. Let me get my video on. Okay, I too want to thank you, Mr. Barone, and, and the task force for all of your work. I will say of all the issues that I think that any of us have dealt with as school board members, I don't think that there is anything more pressing or pervasive or impactful for our constituents. And so this is really important work. I'm not sure how you were chosen to be the spokesperson for the four co-chairs. It would have been nice perhaps to hear from all of them, but I certainly appreciate you being here. I'd like to follow up a little bit on Ms. Marin's comments. And I want to clarify, because I'm sorry, in all of the reading, I wasn't, I know one of the questions that's come up is who's leading this, the tech efforts for FCPS? And is, I'm assuming that's you, Marty, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm sorry?
Yes, with my team.
With your team. Okay, and so where, where, where is the, aside from the tech council, where is the expertise as they are making recommendations to make sure that we're following through on those in a way that is what was intended?
So what we are beginning to work with an outside consultant who is providing that input to our group. I have utilized the expertise of the Tech Advisory Council members during this time. I've utilized the expertise of, of county staff at this time. And I've also relied strongly and heavily on the expertise of our IT professionals that we have currently in Fairfax County Public Schools. It is a highly talented group of individuals who have breadth of knowledge around technology and technology issues, not only on the, the infrastructure side, but also on the, the instructional technology side. So I've certainly been utilizing their expertise as well as we've thought about our return to school efforts.
I, I appreciate that. I know you are well aware how stressful this is for so many in our community. I, I just want to make sure that we as the board, the one that holds, you know, our system accountable, that we're asking these questions. What, are there specific safeguards in place, monitoring that you've been able to, or people have recommended so that we can make sure that as we are implementing these things, one, we are able to anticipate or see what those problems might be? And also I'm leading to how we're going to make sure we're reporting those things to the board.
So are there any specifics that you're, that you're thinking of or any specific type of, of situations that might be reported to the board? I know that if, if we felt that we were going to have issues with connectivity or if we felt that we were going to have issues with load or, or any aspect of that return to school, we would certainly be bringing that to the board's knowledge as soon as possible. So I, I didn't know if there was anything specifically outside of current processes that we have in place where we have our regular action teams. We meet regularly as a senior leadership team to talk about those issues across all of our action teams, issues where there are blockers, things that still need to be addressed, and then work very closely with the rest of senior leadership to raise any of those issues to the board if there, if there are things that the board would need to weigh in on.
I, I will ask some specific questions, but what I'm specifically looking for, and I'm wondering if this is possibly something we want to make sure we include in the next conversation, and that is safeguards and structures of accountability. So that we are setting up checkpoints, right? To make sure that we understand what we should be expecting in terms of best practices for this industry. And then we have ways to check ourselves as the preventative measure. So I, I think that's what I'm looking for. So I'll go to specific questions in having read the, the report that we just reviewed. On page five, it talked about the status of the advisory, status of tech advisory recommendation hiring our CIO. And the specific language said retract the posting, but I think you said we were in the process of that. Just for transparency and accuracy with the community, shouldn't it say in progress rather than completed?
Yes, we, we could certainly move that to, to completed. We, I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and, and we had talked about that. So we could say in progress, we're in the final stages of, of hiring the, the CIO. So we could certainly change that to in progress.
Okay, and then on page seven, it says review service level agreement in new LMS Schoolology. And it said, the only concern that I think the council raised with respect to load testing. So I'm just wondering how we're addressing that.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I'd like to get an answer, but I don't.
No, we will definitely have the, the team here address that question, but that will be a final one for this round.
And I could, I could certainly have any one of my directors weigh in, but we work regularly with the Schoolology team. And as it relates to load, we're looking at what that looks like down the road for a larger roll out of Schoolology. Currently, within 17 schools, we feel confident that our, the tool will be working for those 17 schools as part of our virtual return. Many of these issues that we think about with the overall SLA is as we think about rolling out the product for 190,000 students of this, not this coming year, but for the next year, the following year. But certainly I could have Ms. Kretzer or others weigh in on that.
If you could just tell me what's been done already, that would be great.
Well, I apologize. If I could just add one, one thing, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then if anybody else on Marty's team wants to add. The particular recommendation there after reviewing in collaboration with the tech council advisors was a very small technical recommendation as it pertained to a particular type of load testing in the service level agreements. And the recommendation was to try to get some additional language in there so that we had that assurance that that particular type of load testing would be done. It wasn't saying that it wasn't being done, it was to try to get it in the contract language. And additionally, in the contract language, we do have a guarantee of a 99.9% uptime delivery on the part of Schoolology with refunds and rebates back if that were not to be achieved. So we've got some pretty precise language in there to protect our interests in terms of making sure that we have a reliable platform.
That's great, but does it tell me what has been done for the load testing for Schoolology for that pilot?
And I'm going to defer that particular part of your question to Ms. Kretzer.
I think Ms. Kretzer has her hand up to respond. Sandy, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So this summer, in addition to what the other testing we did, we did high volume load testing against Schoolology for authentication to make sure that we could get all of our users logged in. And then we're continuing to work with Schoolology on, on down the road, the capacity. We know they do entire states, they have large communities. But we wanted to make sure that those things under our control and that we could do immediately this summer for efficiency, that we could test our high availability authentication, make sure that everybody could get on at one time.
So the test has been done?
That part of the testing has been done, yes, by us, and we have documented. Thank you.
Mr. Barone, did you want to add to any of this? You looked as if you wanted to share.
I'm, I'm just, I was just taking notes and I think that Sloan characterized, that characterized what we wanted more specifically around the SLAs for Schoolology. And I think that the notion of having not only three nines, that's what we would call 99.9, that's called three nines, uptime availability is a, is a pretty good standard for the market. And I think it's key that you have performance penalties. And I think just going back, for example, when I heard the concerns about Blackboard Collaborate, we should make sure that they have also SLAs with performance penalties in that contract as well. So that way you have the same assurance that you're requiring now of Schoolology.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barone. Now we'll be moving on to Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I really appreciate the outstanding questions that my colleagues have asked so far. And with only three minutes, I'll do my best to round that out with more probing questions. My, my primary concern, and I appreciate what Mr. Barone said, the importance of, of a quality CIO cannot be understated. And so I do have concerns, it is described, that the superintendent advertised for an assistant superintendent of information technology rather than a CIO. And now that we're in the process of the recruiting and interviewing, my worry is who did we recruit into the pool? Because advertising for a CIO of a major organization, the third largest employer in Virginia, and 180,000 student customers and staff, we could be getting very different applicants. And we also should have been utilizing an executive search firm to find a best-in-class CIO to come consider this K-12 system. And we don't necessarily need a K-12 individual, we just need an expert CIO. So, Mr. Barone, could you speak a little bit more about what concerns maybe our board should have on whatever candidate the superintendent brings to us and how we can safeguard that we will be getting a best-in-class CIO, given that the, the actual job posting was for an assistant superintendent of IT?
So what I'd like to do, Ms. McLaughlin, if you wouldn't mind, is defer to Marty to kind of summarize what we did. Because we recommended first to pull back the job description and revise it accordingly, like you referenced. Then we also participated in the process. I have some of the specifics, but I'd like Marty to first kind of summarize what happened because we observed the same thing you did. So go ahead, Marty.
Well, it's, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Barone, but since we have such limited time, I think Mr. Smith did a nice job of saying that, you know, it was already out there. So then they tried to address that. So maybe, Maury, if you wouldn't mind, just speak to how you amended the situation and what's that now produced? In terms of, you, you mentioned changing the job description, but how did that affect who you recruited and did you use a search form for the recruitment process? And if so, who? Please provide those details.
So no, we did not use a search form for the, the process. We had talked about providing a search form for the process, but did not at the end of the day based on some discussions that the superintendent may have had with the board. So we did not use a search form.
Well, it wasn't with, wasn't with the board, to my knowledge, that we would have been against a search firm, just to be clear. But please go ahead.
What I know. And so then what we did do, we had the posting. What I know. And so then, what we did do, we had the posting that was available. We had some discussions with the Technology Advisory Council about their input toward the, the job posting itself. And we found ourselves in a conundrum. We found ourselves in a situation where we wanted to have a strong slate of candidates so that we could have a position hired by the end of summer, and knew that with new information that we were giving and to start the process over again, that we perhaps wouldn't be able to do that. At the same time, we were looking at the strength of candidates that we were receiving within the pool, and we're receiving some very strong candidates based on recommendations from the Technology Advisory Council. We did provide the slate of candidates to the Tech Advisory Council. They shared their recommendations of individuals that they thought we should interview for the position. We did have representation on the interview panel itself. We provided opportunities for the members of the community panel to ask follow-up questions that were clearly related to issues that came out of the Tech Advisory Council recommendations, and feel that we will be bringing a, a strong candidate to the board as we move forward in the process. So I feel very confident about the process that we put in place, recognizing the work that the council did provide to the job description. If we see ourselves in this position again, we will have a new job description that we can use, and we'll be using aspects of the job description to create the transition profile for the, the CIO. So that values and validates the work of the tech council. It incorporates it into the work that we have for the new CIO with regard to expectations for the work.
Just a clarifying question, Mr. Smith. So are you saying that in this interviewing process, the people who are being interviewed, do they think they're interviewing for an assistant superintendent of IT or for a CIO with the new job description of what a CIO is versus an assistant superintendent?
So the job posting was for an assistant superintendent for, for IT, and I can say that the phrase was used interchangeably as we were speaking with candidates as part of the process.
But when did the candidate see the new description of what a CIO will be and what's expected of that position?
The candidates themselves who applied for the position did not see the, the updated posting. Again, we are going to use that information as part of the transition process for the new CIO.
So, thank you, Marty. Mr. Barone, do you agree with Marty's assessment that an assistant superintendent of IT is interchangeable with a CIO? Because that isn't how I understood the tech council recommendation.
All right. So let me, let me, let me give you a characterization and maybe an answer that's a little different, Megan. So when you look at, I'll give you an example with one of the pretty famed departments, or I should say agencies, within the Department of Homeland Security, TSA. TSA is run by an administrator today, and the CIO, his official title, is assistant administrator. So I look at this like Marty, I would agree, you can use these terms interchangeably. I know that we had a co-chair, one of my co-chairs, Andrew Cove, who was involved in the process. And while we would have loved to have had it, we were parachuted in, in the middle. So we recommended pulling it back. It, it wasn't able to do that. But I think in terms of the way we filtered, screened the candidates, I should also mention that we had two members of the Technology Infrastructure and Operations Team actually participate in the interview process. I know that they came down with three candidates, and I know that one of them, for example, was a CIO and understood for sure what, what that requirement, the requirements are for a CIO. So you can still use the two titles interchangeably is, is the bottom line here.
Okay. I appreciate that. Madam Chair, I would like a go back. There's, I have more questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darren A. Kofat?
Yes, thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Barone, for being here with us. And again, thank you, Mr. Smith, for this updated plan that does have status updates. And I can see, as always, our team has been working very hard. Most of my questions have been answered, but my, my one that I have left is that kind of a lot, it's a similar track that Ms. McLaughlin was asking. And it is, Mr. Barone, if you can, and I think this is for the public, people who are not technologically savvy as your tech team is, if you can talk to us, because the CISO is a new position, and it's a high recommendation for yours, and where you have it placed in the organization is a very senior position where your recommendation has it placed. If you could speak to that and talk about the difference between the CIO, the CISO, and how do you think that will help fill, fill any gaps that you have seen during this time? Because I'm certain, you, you mentioned 200 hours, and I thank you and your team very much. That is an enormous amount of time for you to place on this, but, but it is a, a service I'm sure you did out of love for the community and using your expertise in this way. So again, thank you for that. But that's my primary question at this point.
Sure. So, I mean, both positions are very important. I think you're going to get a lot of different views, Tammy, in terms of where a CISO, and that's what we call it, a CISO, reports in the structure. I think the most important, and this is, you're speaking to a CEO, so I would, I would not have my, and I say this because with all due respect, I know that another CEO, John Woods, who serves on the, the Technology Infrastructure and Operations Committee, he was, he, he is what you call the epitome of a CISO, and he's a CEO. And so he would say, I want it at the table. Honestly, I've been in, on the boards of many different organizations, and I would say, a CISO is a senior leader on the team. The more important individual is the CIO. I do like them reporting not to each other, and the reason for it is the CISO is kind of like a watchdog. And their job is to make sure there are appropriate checks and balances in terms of the technology put in place. So if they report to one another, then, you know, that's like a, the fox in the hen house. Unfortunately, it doesn't work. But I don't, I don't think they're of the equal stature if you're, if you're, and, and I typically have not seen a CISO on, on what I call the cabinet or the senior executive team, but they are an independent watchdog. So they do have a voice, and they are brought in at times to make sure that they express their independent opinion.
All right. I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little for my connection.
I apologize.
So when you describe them as a watchdog, that's okay. When you describe them as a watchdog, you know, we have some, we have an auditor general, which is kind of the same type of, a watchdog type of position. Did you and your team describe it all, discuss at all the possibility, or has it ever been that a CISO would report to a board as opposed to a superintendent? Or would you not, what are your thoughts on that?
You know, I think if, if you were, again, I, I share this with you from the context of a CEO, and that I did the best that we could in terms, or we did the best we could in terms of, of contextualizing each of these positions. There's no question that the CISO should be at the top level of the organization. And the question is whether or not you, you have it reporting into the superintendent or the board itself. Most organizations would have it reporting into the CEO or the superintendent and not the board. It, you know, in listening to this dialogue, and I think it was Ms. Mrs. Keys-Gamarra, who basically asked for a framework, if you will, for safeguard, a safeguards framework. And I'd say one of the things you might want to consider is having an enterprise risk management plan put in place for you, because that's the purpose of an enterprise risk management initiative, which is to make sure you identify all of the risks of the organization, and what are the mitigation plans around them, and then to have a heat map. And that enterprise risk management plan is, or enterprise risk management is usually done by an independent organization. And they report directly to the oversight body, meaning the board. And that's, I found that in, in the boards that I have participated in to be a very valuable tool in terms of making sure that we could carry out our fiduciary responsibilities.
I appreciate that. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darren A. Kofat. Is that the last of your questions?
Yes, others have been asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Makarsky, did you want to have a turn before I took a turn?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I really, I wanted to talk a few minutes. Thank you, Mr. Barone. I appreciate you being here. You've given so generously of your time and as well talking with Dr. Anderson and myself last week. You've been very helpful to us, and we are so very grateful to you and your co-chairs and everybody that has worked on the advisory team. I, I wanted to talk a little-
No, I, I just want to make a comment because I found it interesting, because I know when I spoke to you and Riccardi, I mentioned that I was only going to be available for one hour.
You should do.
And actually, Marty said I was available from 1:00 to 3:30, even though my calendar doesn't say that. And so I literally scrambled while we were talking. I don't know if you saw me sometimes go offline, so that I could get everything cleared off my schedule till 3:30, because I didn't want to disappoint.
We, we do appreciate that. And I did tell you we would have a lot of questions, right?
Yeah, you did. You did.
Thank you. Thank you. We do really value your time. So I, I hope we're going to be wrapping up here as very soon. My one, my question probably goes to Marty, and that's, you know, we've spoken a little bit, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, we've spoken a little bit together about Schoolology, as I do have three of my schools that will be participating this year as pilots. I am, I'm a little bit worried and would like to maybe hear more about what communication has been put out with our families, so that as they're coming into the new year, you know, there's already a lot of anxiety and trepidation about what's going to happen. And then to have a new platform, what have we done in terms of outreach so far to bridge some of that and prepare them?
I'm just trying to get back on here. There we go. So again, we have our weekly Schoolology meetings. We're preparing for the turn itself. And as part of the work of this team, we're preparing the, the documents that will be a companion piece to the documents that are going to go out to the, the families on how to best access sessions for virtual learning. So updates around Blackboard Collaborate Ultra, updates for Google Meet. While we've been very focused on talking about those updates and information to the board and information to the community, we understand that our Schoolology parents are a smaller subset of that. And rather than put all of that information out in confused folds around, well, Schoolology and what's that, our, our schools are aware of that and are, are working with the team to get that information out to families. We're creating videos for our Schoolology families that will be, again, a companion piece for the types of videos that we're preparing for the rest of our families. We're preparing those same one-cheaters so that families get a better sense of how to use Schoolology. We're doing that professional development with teachers right now so that they fully understand how to use the system and can log into the system. So it's the team working to provide that, that input to families. And we know that, that because of some of the issues that we've been having with one particular piece of Schoolology, and the fact that we started this just a week or two later than, than I perhaps wanted to, and with regard to providing some input to the Tech Advisory Council about Schoolology, providing updates to the superintendent about Schoolology, we're a little closer to the wall than, than we should be, but I feel confident that we'll be able to provide the updates to parents.
Thank you. And I hope that's, I'm going to be done soon, because as I said, you know, it's a year, I, I don't have to tell you, but your change and anxiety, and, and I want to make sure that our parents know this is coming. There will be support, and it's not a, a, you know, surprise. Here we are, and now here's a new tool, tool for you to use. And in that vein, was there ever any thought given to maybe not starting with Schoolology right from September, but maybe pushing it a little bit further into the school year, maybe the second half? Or was that deemed just too disruptive?
Well, it's a timing piece for, we want to make sure that we start a pilot at the beginning of the year so that we can get a sense for some of the issues that we might experience at the beginning of the year with the rollout. We want to be able to assess that pilot through the course of a full year to troubleshoot any issues that we might have with the full rollout. And also, it can be even more confusing for parents and for students to start on one platform and then shift midstream. And I, I think that there's another piece that when you're doing any major rollout, there's a lot that's happening in the background to ensure that we get data transferred over from one system to another. There are terabytes of, of, of actual teacher information, teacher resources that we're transitioning from Blackboard into Schoolology. So there's a long run-up to doing that work, and we wouldn't want to do that in the middle of the year. It's, it's better to do it when we have time to do it in the summer and start fresh and monitor and assess the, the product for the entire year.
And you're confident, confident that we're on track to do or have done all those pieces to be prepared September 8?
I feel that we are on track to, to have a smooth rollout of Schoolology for our pilot schools on September 8. I had a conversation this morning with, with Ms. Jewell about the Schoolology rollout. Again, the team meets on a weekly basis. There have been no red flags that have been reported to me about our ability to be ready to go on the first day of school.
Okay. And one last question that I have that, you know, we've got some new teachers coming in this year. It's, it's quite a year to start as a, as a new educator. I know we have great beginnings. Are there going to be other resources or required mentors? I want to make sure that these teachers have the, you know, a, an extra hand and, and help this year to be successful with our kids. So.
So Ms. Walt's going to answer some of that, and we have principals on the call too, who are, who are working very closely with their new teachers to help get them acclimated to this new first day of school approach that we've never done before. So I could certainly turn it over to Ms. Walt and perhaps any one of the principals to talk about what they're doing to support new teachers.
Ms. Walt, please, please go ahead, Ms. Walt.
Thank you, Ms. Makarsky. Thank you so much for your question. And we welcomed over 1,100 new teachers last week to Fairfax County Public Schools. So these are new and new to Fairfax County, County teachers. And we provided a virtual Great Beginnings Teacher Induction Program last week to acclimate them to FCPS, to their cohorts, which are comprised of grade-level colleagues or content area colleagues. And they have also been provided with a, a complement of ISTE classes, the International Society for Technology Education. So courses such as providing engaging learning environments for students and other courses as well. Throughout the year, they'll have opportunities to participate in seminars after school, and each new teacher will receive a mentor at their grade level or within their content area. So it is a wraparound type of support for our new teachers. We are keenly aware that some of our new teachers did not finish their student D team and are starting their careers in a very- and are starting their careers in a very unique environment and we're providing as many supports for them as we can. And if there are any principals on the call who would like to share maybe from the school perspective, the supports that they're providing, that would be great. Thank you.
I will ask in the, due to our time and I want to be mindful of Mr. Veroni's time and I also have some questions for him that I'd like to get to before he leaves, I'd like to ask one of our principals to respond. I guess Ms. Goodlow, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much. I'll be very brief and I know I am sharing any similar information to Mr. Grimm and Mr. Vazekas as well, who are on this call. Thank you Kathleen for summarizing all the support centrally for our new staff and just know that we welcomed all of our new teachers to our buildings virtually last week with our own school-based kickoffs. And every teacher who's new to the building, whether they're a veteran transferring from another school district or from within FCPS, or a brand-new teacher, has a building-level mentor, as well as the lead mentor in the building and of course, the support of all administrators. So we're working in very close contact with all of our new teachers to support them, to acclimate to the beginning of the school year, to the virtual learning environment, as well as supporting them at the school level on a day-to-day basis. That's probably the quickest encapsulation I can give. I know you have a lot on the agenda today.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm done. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I will be very brief because I do know your time has not expired, Mr. Veroni, and we will have to let you go. Thank you for clarifying because Ms. Makarsky and I were a little confused because we thought you had an hour and then it got extended a little bit. So we-
That was me. Guys, for that, I was reading my notes and so I apologize.
Ah, I got it.
Sometimes Marty, you learn to adapt and go and that's what we did.
So folks will ask the final questions to Mr. Veroni and then we will have to relieve him because his one hour has now extended into additional one and a half. If we have additional questions specifically for Mr. Veroni, we will collect that and make sure that he is provided them. We will have the go-bats be one minute and hopefully those will be questions that can be directed towards the staff. Mr. Veroni, my question for you was regarding the conversation we were having regarding the appointment of the CIO. You shared that two of your colleagues were able to serve on the panel. What concerns did any of these participants raise to you regarding the level of candidates that were received, that ended up applying for the position despite the changes with the job description?
So the feedback I got, and I did check in with two of them, and was that they were pretty good caliber candidates that came through the pipeline. You know, there, I think in the end, there were 12 individuals interviewed. I know that it came down to three candidates and I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything more than that.
Probably not, Mr. Waltz.
We're not able to share more than that at this point.
So I'll just say it came down to three candidates and they were impressed with the three candidates. There were pros and cons with each. They did come up with a recommendation. At this point, they do not know and nor do I who that candidate will be. But they were pleased with the, in spite of everything that happened and all that transpired in terms of the job description and the title, the fact of the matter is you did get some pretty senior and experienced resumes along the lines that we specifically requested to. We wanted somebody that was cloud experience, SaaS-based applications experience. We were pretty clear in our recommendation for the type of candidate we were seeking.
So it sounds to me that you're saying that the team had a high level of confidence that despite the job description issues, that the core of the experiences recommended that was-
Right. And again, we don't know, we don't, you know, obviously they would have an opinion on the final selection because they provided that recommendation. And the recommendation was somebody that did have the CIO experience.
Thank you. And if you could also share with the public, because we do have four co-chairs and I know this is a question that I asked of you, how did you come to be the de facto representative of the group?
You know, I became the de facto, I think part of it was my experience, part of it was, I think my volunteer and I frankly would say that I was able to bring the resources of my organization into bear because they, we are a consultancy that focuses in on education and so I was able to leverage those resources for purposes of supporting FCPS. I will just say that, I just want to comment too, on the prior question, Kathleen Waltz, I just want you to know that I have one of those incoming teachers and I was into FCPS, that's actually my future daughter-in-law, and I know that she's regularly tuning in as I'm kind of overseeing a little of what she's doing just so that I could be informed coming into today. And I will say that everything you indicated was in fact the case. Good quality professional development, leveraging the ISTI courses, which I think is really good. And then to you, Dr. Anderson, I just want to say it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor for us, serving to support this community. It's, you have one of the top 10 school districts in the country and I know that all of us who participated really felt it was an honor to do so.
Well, we thank you. And on that note, I will thank you for your time with us because I do know we have extended you significantly. So I appreciate that. You may have some questions coming your way in the near future, so I'm looking forward to communicating with you very, very soon. So thank you, Mr. Veroni, for joining us. I do have some questions that I will send to staff, given the time where we are at this point in our agenda. We do have four, five, I believe, hands that are up for go-bats. We will keep these go-bats to one minute and so we will start with Ms. Seismohizer.
I think Ms. McLaughlin was ahead of me, but I'm happy to start.
Oh, I thought you had asked after your turn, so I was just keeping track from when you sent me the note.
Oh, I apologize. I'm fine going now.
Go ahead, please, one minute.
All right, thank you. I wanted to, I appreciate all the hard work that we're doing here. I wanted to ask a little bit around fidelity of implementation in terms of how are we, Ms. Waltz talked about this great PD that she's developed and, but how are we ensuring that all this professional development is going to be implemented with fidelity in going forward? I know one of the concerns from last spring was the consistency across settings. I know last spring was kind of the Wild West, but I would like to talk about that a little bit.
So might I jump in here?
Yes, please, Ms. Waltz. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for the question because that's really important and it's very much weighing on our minds. And so what we did for the reopening of schools' PD is we not only provided the synchronous or asynchronous PD, but also opportunities for teachers to process and reflect the information that they receive through the PD and through instructional coaches, reading specialists, school-based technology specialists. There is follow-through and coaching. And additionally, through their collaborative learning teams, they have the opportunity to reflect with others at their grade level or their content area. So there is that piece of follow-through. Additionally, we plan to assess the impact as we get into the school year, so to take a look at the application of those skills and that new information that teachers will be able to apply to their practice. So that's to come. First thing is to have the opportunity to reflect and process in groups.
Great. And if I may ask, one of our regional superintendents perhaps, the talks are from that level as to the fidelity implementation and plans on that and I'd appreciate that.
Just a quick reminder to staff who are answering questions, we are significantly behind schedule in a very, very heavy day, so we could keep our responses as sustained and as brief as possible. We would be very appreciative of that. Thank you. I believe Ms. Goodlow, please go ahead. I'm sorry, not a, you said regional superintendent, Ms. Seismohizer?
Anyone, principals, regions, someone sort of-
Ms. Goodlow, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Anderson. I apologize, I did not raise my hand for this one, but I assure you that we are working collaboratively with our CTs, our collaborative teams, as Ms. Waltz has shared, to follow up on all of our professional development and work directly with our teachers to ensure that fidelity of implementation. They do have quite a list of required PDs as well as really robust selection of optional PDs that teachers are taking advantage of as early as today and yesterday. So they're working through it and that's part of our role is to supervise that and ensure that they get through those things and are collaborating with their colleagues to share how they will best use those, what they learned in classes.
Thank you, Dr. Goodlow. Dr. Ivy, please go ahead.
Sure, I just would add that the required training is also in my PDE and as the teachers complete it, it is indicated there and principals and regions will be, have a way and will be checking that as well to see who has completed the training and who hasn't.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seismohizer, does that complete your questions?
I had no one more follow-up that, for Mr. Smith, we had, he had mentioned the Google Meets and the greater capability and some principals have sort of talked about doing that. My question really, just to clarify, was those who've currently committed to Blackboard Collaborate, is there going to be some work to help encourage them to perhaps greater utilize Google Meet because of that community building aspects once the greater capabilities will be available? That's my concern as one who may not fit for them.
So I guess the answer, our principals can always move to other tools and move to Google Meet. I think that it's also the level of comfortability that the teacher has with the platform, so they really do work to engage their staff to get a sense of the platform that they want to use. We will, we have touted the features in Google Meet. We know that many principals have taken advantage of those and they're sharing that with their colleagues. So I can't definitely say that we're going to tell principals that they should move to Google Meet, but they certainly know that they are welcome to do so. I know that there are a lot of factors involved and we're really hopeful that we'll be able to get a virtual tool that will meet all of these needs and that we won't have to have these discussions in the future about the number of folks you can see on your screen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. McLaughlin, you have one minute.
I was just going to go ahead and start the timer for myself as well. So I guess quick questions, I'm just going to throw out there as quickly as I can. Marty, if you could speak to who is the outside consultant you're using in your IT work, because you mentioned that in a prior answer. And then my other question goes to what Rochana's been asking about Google Meet and why we wouldn't want to ensure the fidelity of success with 200 schools. If we're hearing that many principals and families are saying Google Meet provides a superior synchronous learning experience, why we're leaving that up to be autonomous building to building? I worry about, again, that fidelity of success and that variability. And then the other question I would say to my colleagues is, I think in light of everything we're doing, we need to have monthly updates on IT in our work sessions built into our calendar. And then finally, I would like to have a greater discussion about Mr. Veroni's recommendation that the board established a standing IT committee to report directly to the board to ensure the independent outside-in feedback to the board for good checks and balances. If the superintendent's going to have one and we're going to have one, I worry about how those overlap. And finally, to what Ms. Kofats said, we do have our Office of the Auditor General, which is the perfect vehicle for having the enterprise risk management assessment of where we are on technology for concerns, oversight, heat maps. Mr. Veroni said that was a very successful tool in boards that he served on, so I would put that for our board's consideration as well. So those were my primary questions that I wanted to have answered or comment to.
So the answer, in terms of the consultant, the consultant's name is Jason Reed with FTI, with whom we've just recently been working.
Great. That's great news. Thank you.
With regard to Google Meet, so I think that the jury is out on tools. We know that there are certain issues that we see with Blackboard Collaborate Ultra in terms of some of our meetings. It's not the same as other experiences that we've seen. Since we're in an RFP, I'm not going to talk about any tools right now, but we know that it doesn't have some of the same experiences and yet again, it has certain functionality that our teachers really do appreciate in the classroom. What we heard loudly and clearly from our principals around the functionality of our current, of our previous suite, which was the basic G suite for education, was that they wanted the functionality of Google Meet. So we worked to build that in, to purchase the enterprise license. So we feel like any of those principals and teachers who want to utilize that functionality, it is there for them to use. And if there are those principals and teachers who choose to continue to use the tool that they're comfortable with or the tool that they feel provides the most functionality for their students in the classroom, they can certainly continue to use Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. So we feel like we've provided good options for our administrators and our instructors around virtual tools and again, hope to land on a tool at the end of our RFP window that will meet the needs for the system moving forward.
Thank you. And I believe that Mr. Grimm also had his hand up maybe to speak to that question that Ms. McLaughlin posed.
No, I apologize. I had my hand up for the earlier one. I was just working on my shoulder muscles.
Okay, no problem.
So as a clarifier, Marty, is it your belief that both Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and Google Meet are both equally providing quality synchronous learning option for students?
Yeah, I believe that the two tools are providing quality synchronous learning opportunities for students. We know that Blackboard doesn't offer the same interface as Google Meet with the number of individuals, but again, we know that there are certain functions that some of our principals and teachers enjoy with Google Meet, ease of use for them. And then there are others who are very clearly in the Google Meet camp with some of the functionality there. So again, I feel like for the tools that we have available, that they can meet the needs of our staff, especially with the added functionalities of the enterprise license for Google. And I'll say again that we're very hopeful that we land on a tool that we will, that will be able to meet all of the needs and requirements moving forward post 2021.
Thank you. My recommendation to the board and the superintendent is that we consider a survey for our parents and students a month into the school year to see how their experiences are with Google Meet versus Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and that might also help enlighten us on where people are finding satisfaction.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Keys-Gavara?
Yes, I want to follow up because I really appreciate Mr. Veroni mentioning the enterprise risk management plan. And Marty, were you just saying that that's essentially what Jason is doing? Is that, I want to make sure I understood.
No, that's not the enterprise risk management plan. That is the consultant working with to monitor overall efforts for return to school as well as efforts in technology. A few years back, we had, the auditor general did conduct an enterprise risk management assessment for the entirety of the system. That plan is probably at least five years old and so there is an opportunity perhaps to take another look at- And so there is an opportunity perhaps to take another look at enterprise risk management assessment. But Jason is not doing that for the system, no. That enterprise assessment was to look at risks across the entire system, not only in, in technology.
Okay, because I, I didn't think that he could work both for the board and for, for you. So I, I continue to advocate for that. I'm really grateful that he, having the language of, of, of his world, was able to give us that language. And so I would like for us to, the board to consider that. I, as other follow-ups, I'd like to be able to identify, we know that we had deficiencies in the spring with respect to particular communities that we were not serving well. And so I think going forward, this board needs to know how we're going to make sure we don't repeat those problems. So I'd like for that to be reported to us.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. We will happily take all of the rest of the comments and writing.
I, I just, I, I just want to say, this is the single most important thing that we have to do. And I, I, I hear you. I will abide by that. But I, I think that this board needs to be able to flush out these problems and hear from one another because we do not do our best work as individuals.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yes, thank you. And I echo Ms. Keys-Gamara's concerns because the public also needs to hear the dialogue between us. I would like to address two things. One is on slides nine and 10, we talk about the professional development and then we talk about specialized resource reports for our community. I'd like to better understand what we are doing beyond the September startup for professional development, how we will reinforce professional development throughout the year and insert additional tune-ups, which are very important when we are rolling out new systems such as this. And then secondly, I'd like to understand where the collaboration between each of these groups and between buildings is going to go on for best, sharing best practices and experiences by our student-facing professionals so that we can actually take advantage of what's, what's happening, what great things are happening. And the last piece, I will follow up on Mr. Reed and how, and the work he's doing.
Thank you. Ms. Wells, go ahead.
Yeah, so I can respond to the first question about what happens after September 8th with regard to professional development. We have a comprehensive professional development plan for the reopening of schools. And part of that is required professional development. And a lot of it is also optional or recommended professional development, which will, will continue to be available for our teachers. So we would want as many teachers as possible to complete the required PD before September 8th. And then there are many options for recommended PD. Additionally, when we think about our theory of action, we have built PD opportunities around our theory of action. We have a lot of professional development moving forward around equity and cultural responsiveness. That is a very big part of the reopening of schools and beyond. So it is not just a one and done. We will continue to provide many opportunities for our teachers, both required and recommended. As far as the second question, I think that would be best answered by one of our region assistant superintendents because it is about collaboration among and between schools. Is that correct?
Yes, I think Ms. Baynig raised her hand. Ms. Baynig, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. And, thank you. And, and my sincere apologies about earlier, my power clicked off. I appreciate whoever addressed the last question. So we, you know, we, we, in the regions, we provide a lot of opportunities for the principals to collaborate. So our, our principals continue to organically meet on their own as pyramids. And we also have formal pyramid meetings where we'll be continuing to share these best practices and ensure alignment within communities and across levels. We also in September will continue with weekly region meetings. And a lot of that is sharing best practices. And we also do hold weekly office hours by level that again, give those opportunities to share, you know, what's working and replicating. And I think if you look at a lot of the school communications, you'll see a lot of them are very consistent. And, and I think it's, it's just one piece of evidence of the collaboration that we're seeing across the schools. The RAS and the EPs are, I think our team continues to get stronger every single week. And we have many, many conversations around alignment and consistency, you know, in decision-making and, and what's happening in our schools. And we, we continue to have those conversations every single day. So those are just a few of the ways we'll continue to promote that, that alignment and, and that replication of those best practices.
Thank you very much, Dr. Baynig. And I believe your next part of the question, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you are going to send in writing as time was up. I believe our next speaker is Ms. Omesh.
Thank you. Two quick questions. First, to staff, of course, would it be possible to include a round of review and input by the equity team? Firstly, the FCPS response to the recommendation. And then second, eventual oversight and implementation reports that come out of that? I mean, we're trying to kind of catch everything, but I, I think that would be important. That's first. And the second is, would it be possible for a recommendation to be requested or crafted surrounding basic tech literacy? And that's to, I distinguish that from tech support. In reviewing the recommendations, I didn't see a specific component on that, you know, namely SIS, Blackboard, all these different things that now homeschooling parents essentially have to navigate, not to mention all sorts of other barriers related to that. So I'd like to hear if, if those two things could be considered. I'll put them as next steps, but I really would like to see these implemented. So if Dr. Braybrand or anyone could address that, please.
Sure, Abra. The, the equity team can absolutely review the technology recommendations. Are you just making sure that there's an equity lens on those? We can absolutely do that. I can have Kathleen review those and give any updates. And are you talking about basic technology literacy for employees or for parents?
Parents. I mean, so there's a lot of PD, I think, right? From what you guys are saying for employees, but families.
So earlier, I think we shared during the professional development, am I right, Kathleen or Marty, that we're, we're putting out tech tips already, like in the next day or two, we're mailing it out to every family? Kathleen, can you talk, Marty, Kathleen, can you talk a little about that?
Yes, we have posted that document with all translations in our eight major languages to the principal's corner so that they can access that. Additionally, we are planning on mailing that home to each family before the school year begins. The document contains not only tech tips for families, but it also includes another piece, which is best practices in distance learning. So really two sides to the document that we believe is going to be very helpful for families. So again, those have been posted, are ready to go. And we're also mailing them and printing them for distribution to our schools for their food distribution sites as well as their laptop distribution.
Yeah, if we could request a recommendation or comment from the tech council on this, I, I think that'd be good. I respect the work that's put in, appreciate that. I'm mindful of coming from hand-holding and more, more robust efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Omesh. Thank you so much. Ms. Tolan and then Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
Yes, I just had a very quick comment from my colleagues. I wanted to remind them that we approved in the last, our last meeting with the, with the auditor general that they would be working on a business continuity plan. You know, auditing where we were with that and that the enterprise risk management plan and business continuity plan often go hand in hand. So I'm going to be adding that to our next steps that we could look at, you know, maybe slightly enhancing that work that we've already approved for OAJ.
Thank you very much. And thank you as well for that reminder, Ms. Tolan. The next steps, the link was added to the chat. If you have some next steps or questions that have not been responded to during this period, because we do know there are a lot more questions than we have time to address. So please be sure to add them there. Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And our last go back is Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
All right, one comment and one question. The question is regarding Jason Reed and Dr. Braybrand and Riccardi. I guess this is for you clarification. I believe the board had at one point talked about hiring that, or his organization as an oversight. And now I'm hearing they're working for FCPS, if I could have clarity on that. And then the second comment that I would ask for is, yes, Marty, I think you're right, the enterprise risk management plan was done during the era of Dr. Garza. And for some reason, you know, transition in leadership, it was not fully deployed, even though we were at a good place. But at Greg's suggestion, I would like to also make that a next step to look at. But my question, if you could answer my question about Jason Reed.
I will start and then I will invite Mr. Foster to please round out the response. Mr. Reed is working in the same capacity that the board required him to. But he is also working in tangent with the FCPS leadership to gather information as well. The scope of work of Mr. Reed was shared with the board, I believe, a week ago regarding who exactly who would be interfacing with. That includes us as the board, Mr. Smith, Mr. Foster, and the superintendent as needed. Mr. Foster, would you like to add any additional information to that?
You know, I'm sure you summarized, I think, very well what Mr. Reed is going to be doing for the, the school board and who he's going to be interacting with. So I don't really have anything to add. I'm happy to, if you have any additional questions, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I, I do. I, I don't, and I'm, I'm walking a fine line here, Mr. Foster. And you can tell me, you know, where, what I, the agreement was, is he was to be working for the board. And that was our last meeting and I don't want to talk much more because this was a, a session that was closed. So I, I, I am perplexed a little bit and I must have missed the communication. I was out last week. I must have missed that piece of communication that talked more extensively about that. So I don't know what you can speak, if you could speak specifically, Mr. Foster, to what he would be doing for the board as well as what he would be doing for the system. Because the role we were looking at, it was, it was, it would, it'd be hard to do both.
Yeah, he, the, the contract is with the board. As the chair indicated, he will be periodically reporting to the board. In order to provide full reports and information to the board on his project management and IT and other work, it is, it is necessary that he meet periodically virtually with the superintendent and Mr. Smith to make sure that he is, you know, fully, number one, fully understanding the work that is being done and will be done and to provide the necessary support based on, you know, that, that information. And so I'm happy to follow up with you offline, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, if you have any additional questions.
Certainly. And I would just like to hear from Dr. Braybrand, how he sees his role working with Mr. Reed.
Sure. You know, again, I wasn't in some of the meetings that the board's been in. This was seen as a, a additional help to get us ready for return to school. So I certainly embrace having an onboard deck. We, we, as Marty said, we've had help from the county, we've had his team, we've had the co-chairs. But actually, what's not, as transitioning from the Technology Advisory Council into the Standing Committee. And by the way, for members of the board, that Standing Committee has not been stood up yet. So we can talk about whether it would be best to be a school board committee. I don't think we need two standing committees of both the superintendent. But, but as we're making this transition, having Jason on board for the weeks leading up to the start of school is a welcome addition to giving us supports. I understand he's to share updates with you and that's certainly, certainly fine by me and look forward to having his expertise. I've inter, interacted with him a few times and really feel he has a lot of knowledge to offer.
So Dr. Perp, did you hire him? Did you interview him? Did you hire him? Who hired him specifically?
I, I don't believe I interviewed him. I think Mr. Foster said, working with you all, there was going to be an agreement developed between him and the board. And I certainly was made aware that there would be an agreement. And that's what we've been working on for the last couple of weeks.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax, I think we need to have this conversation offline with Mr. Foster so we can get into some of the details that we were not, that we're not able to get into at this point.
Sure. I would suggest that is for the whole board to have that conversation, chair. Absolutely. That's what I was thinking, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Sure, that's absolutely fine. I think the scope of work was shared, but we will certainly pick that up again.
Thank you. And, and the management, if we can have that on, on the next step for consideration, Dr. Anderson.
Please go ahead and you could add it to the list that is provided. It is in the chat. That will be very helpful so we can capture exactly what your thoughts are. At this point, we are a little bit behind for our next section. We are going to take a quick 10-minute break and come back at 4:15 so we can begin with the special education updates. So 4:15 and we will be right back to take roll call. Thank you all.